All right. Good evening, everyone. I call this June 10, 2025 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. We will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair Barboah. But first, I'm going to ask for a point of personal privilege. As we're about to say our pledge of allegiance to our flag back here behind me, I think it's important at this point in time, this time in our country, to make a brief statement about what that pledge means and what it doesn't mean to me. I love this country. I believe in our country. I think this is an amazing place that we are all so lucky to live in. And people strive to come here. They strive to bring their families here, to bring their lives here, to have the same opportunities that every single one of us has in our lives. And when I say the pledge, the pledge is to the Constitution. It's to the vision of our founding fathers and so many, like, you know, Abraham Lincoln and Dr. King and so many others in between, to really form a more perfect union, right? To give everyone the pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness, freedom, justice, and equality. That is what I pledge allegiance to. And I just want to state to the public, to my colleagues, to everyone, that I do not pledge allegiance to a president. I do not pledge allegiance to a political party. I pledge allegiance to our country, to the values that I just spoke about. And I believe those values are under fundamental attack like we have never seen before. And far too many people, I believe, right now are pledging allegiance to an individual, to a party. And that's shameful, frankly, because that is not what this country is about. That is not what the American value is. We are supposed to be engaged in a conversation, in a dialogue, an American dialogue, and that is not what happens. That's not what's happening right now. When the party of law and order is sending the military into a major American city threatening to arrest the governor of the fourth largest economy in the world, to deport people that came here seeking a better life, seeking the American life that we all share and cherish, that's not law and order. Fiscal discipline, right? This is the party supposedly of fiscal conservatives. Yet is the whole party marching lockstep to pass a bill that'll add $6 trillion to our national debt to our children's collective credit card for someone else to deal with down the line? The party of local government and local control is consolidating control at the federal level and putting power in the hands of unelected bureaucrats and seizing power from the legislative branch of the government and seizing power from the states and local governments. So I think it's, I just felt the need today with all that's happening in our country, all the people that are feeling scared, that are feeling under attack, that I just say very clearly for myself, I pledge allegiance to the flag of our constitution, of our country, of the values that undergird that, not to what we see going on today in our Capitol, which is a cult attitude. And I think that we have to take our stand here and our board locally in the state of New Mexico and defend those values, defend our constitution, defend our democracy, and defend what is right and good about this country and why people want to come here and be Americans just like every one of us. So thank you so much, my colleagues, for that moment, and thank you all. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Staff is requesting that the rules be suspended for the following items to be presented and considered for final adoption this evening. Final adoption consideration is requested to meet the state statute deadlines and begin work before supply prices increase and concert season ends. Item 9A, county clerk designating Bernalillo County polling places and precinct consolidations for the 2026-2027 elections be heard under adoption of resolutions as item 8C. Item 9I, technical services, Mesa del Sol parking lot be under adoption of resolutions as item 8D. Item 10A, accounting, the annual comprehensive final report, our ACFER for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024, be moved up in the agenda to be heard immediately following the consent agenda. A vote is required for the above changes to the agenda and the suspension of the rules.
Thank you, Madam County Manager. Could you repeat the first suspension that you requested?
9A, this is the county clerk designating the county polling places and precinct consolidations and having it come under 8C.
Okay. I think I understand what you're saying there. All right. I appreciate that. Commissioner, yes.
I just have a question on the last one. What did you say on 10?
10A to be heard immediately following the consent agenda, and that's the ACFER.
Okay. And the reason for that is?
I don't know why the staff wanted to move it up, but we are asking for suspension of the rules on that so we can adopt it today.
Madam Chair, Madam County, Mr. Chair, Madam County Manager, just for correction. So 10A for the ACFER does not require a two-hearing rule, so it's on the agenda under approvals. However, the auditor who will be joining us that will be presenting part of this presentation is going to be participating via remote due to a travel schedule. And so since it was naturally at the end of the agenda, he requested it be brought up to be heard immediately following consent, just earlier on the agenda.
Thank you, Julie.
So to clarify for everyone, there's two rule suspensions that are related to bypassing the two-hearing rule, and then there is one request just to reorganize the agenda to move that item up.
Correct.
All right. Commissioners, are there any changes or additions? All right, seeing none. Do we have a motion for the proposed changes?
I'll move approval.
Second?
I have a second. A quick discussion here. I just wanted to say, I understand, I think, that the polling places needing to move quickly on that with the regular local election coming up. I'm not sure that I agree with the parking lot being an urgent issue, given that it's a capital project, that there's been quite a bit of time to bring that forward. So I'm going to go ahead and support this, but I just, you know, I think that in the future, these kinds of things, we just need to be planning them out further so that really that request for immediate action is really related to things that are just urgent and emergent. And I don't think that paving a parking lot necessarily falls in that category in general. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of, or, sorry, Commissioner Benson is online. I didn't say that at the beginning of the meeting, so we have four commissioners in person, Commissioner Benson online. So we will be taking all of our votes this evening by roll call. So the vote here is to adopt the agenda and approve the rule suspension.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair, leave us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes 5-0. And so next up this evening, we have our public comment. So during public comment, each person has two minutes, and you'll be alerted to your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you're speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. To maintain order and decorum in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone present, speakers must adhere to the two-minute time limit. If the conduct of the presenter violates the rules, they may be subject to removal. Javier, if you could please call the names.
Thank you, Chair. Tonight, we have a total of nine speakers with four speakers on Zoom. When I call your name, please line up at the podium, and I will call three names at a time. The first speaker is going to be Don Schrader, followed by Chris Baca, followed by Geraldo Cianello.
I urge all musicians, all radio stations to stop playing all songs that glamorize booze. No more words about tequila, beer, whiskey, cerveza, cantinas. Booze lowers sex hormone testosterone. Why would anyone who loves sex drink booze? In 2023, overdoses of illegal drugs killed 948 persons in New Mexico. In 2023, booze killed 1,896 persons in New Mexico, twice as many. Would most musicians, most radio stations play songs celebrating meth and fentanyl? In 2018, a worldwide study in 195 nations found there is no safe level of drinking booze. Booze is slow poison to every cell of the body. Precious friends of mine have suffered their lives devastated or cut short by damn booze. I urge all musicians, all athletes, all community leaders to join me pledging publicly to drink no booze the rest of our lives. I do not want to say and do things I later terribly regret. My TV programs are on my YouTube channel, Don Schrader. Don, D-O-N, Schrader, S-C-H-R-A-D-E-R.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Chris Baca, followed by Geraldo Cianello, followed by Mary Walker Hedetta.
Excuse me. Chris Baca, Yes Housing. I'm proud to appear before this gossipy body simply to thank you all for the support you have provided. Yes Housing Inc. in our endeavors, most specifically Commissioner Barbara Baca, Commissioner Frank Baca, for projects we are doing throughout the city. One in the North Valley, near North Valley, Cañac Fuerte, will have 61 apartments that are affordable, four live-workout units for retail units and 21 townhomes. The West Mesa Ridge Project, which has its completion, 244 units on course in front of West Mesa. Our South Valley Project on Rio Bravo and Second Southeast that it full build out will have over 400 affordable units and 200 townhomes. Also wanted to thank the staff, starting with the county manager, who has been very open to our conversations with Public Works, with Ms. Danette Townsend, also on many issues, and Mr. Marcos Gonzalez. I can say, having worked in the arena of public service for over 52 years, this is one of the most responsive bodies I've ever been privileged to work with. At the end of all of this, we will have more than 1,000 units on the ground, ready to serve the community. Along with that, community development opportunities for small businesses. And in the South Valley, an aggregator facility for 74 small farms. Our belief is that if we build a community that meets the needs of the community, it is healthier and better for everyone, not just the tenants that we have in our units. And I want to thank you for all your support. You've been great to work with, and we look forward to cutting some ribbons here pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baca.
Dr. Geraldo Cianello, followed by Mary Walker Hedetta, followed by Senator Debbie O'Malley.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, County Commissioners and staff. This is what happens when you're blessed to be a naturalized American citizen who waited nine years legally by learning the U.S. history and our American flag. June 14 is Flag Day commemorating the day in 1777 when the Continental Congress passed a resolution that the flag of the 13 United States be 13 stripes alternate red and white, that the Union be 13 stars white in a blue field representing a new constellation. Since that time, generations of Americans have celebrated the flag as a symbol of our God-given freedoms and God-blessed nation. And in every American military campaign, all glory has been a symbol of our freedom. Did you know what those colors symbolize? Red for bravery, white for honesty, and blue for justice? That said, last Wednesday, you had a community event in Mariposa Park. I appreciated that you had a banner saying "Summer of Nonviolence." Did you know that Albuquerque is the second most violent crime in the nation per capita, next to DC, and 12th globally? That's because New Mexico's dead last in education. Radical leftist agitators are planning a series of coordinated demonstration across New Mexico on June 14, targeting President with what they're branding as "No Kings Peaceful Protest," which already sparked violent interaction in places like LA where criminal aliens and anarchists recently clashed with federal law enforcement officers. These June 14 protesters seem to be creating chaos, bringing the same scenes of vandalism and violence to New Mexico. As President Trump and federal law enforcement officials continue to work in restoring law and order nationwide, the people of New Mexico are left wondering, will these protests bring more chaos, instability to our communities, and who will be held accountable when they do? So may God give you our public servants and law enforcement officials wisdom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cianello.
My apologies. We have one more in-person speaker, so Mary Walker Hedetta, and then followed by Luis Khan.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, County Commissioners and staff. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm here to speak on the commemoration of Flag Day. So it was on June 14 in 1777 that the Second Continental Congress selected the flag of the United States. Our founders were in the midst of fighting an eight-year-long war to come out from under the dominion of the most powerful globalist king in world history. In 1885, the first version of the Pledge of Allegiance was first written by Union Army Captain George Thatcher Balch, a veteran of the Civil War. Balch became auditor of the New York City Board of Education, where he authored methods of teaching patriotism in the public schools, 1890. He is largely responsible for flag poles being placed in front of public schools. Balch's pledge called a, quote, "salute to the flag," unquote, was, quote, "I give my heart and my hand to my country, one country, one language, one flag," unquote. Balch's pledge was revised in 1892. The 36-year-old Baptist minister Francis Bellamy, who was ordained in the Baptist Church of Little Falls, New York. Bellamy was a member of the staff of the Youth Companion, which published the Pledge of Allegiance on September 8, 1892, in Boston, Massachusetts. The magazine recommended the pledge to be a part of a school program for the First Columbus Day Celebration, together with singing "America," prayer, a patriotic speech, and the reading of President Benjamin Harrison's proclamation, July 21, 1892. Quote, "Let the national flag float over every schoolhouse in the country and the exercises by such as shall impress upon our youth the patriotic duties of American citizenship. Let there be expressions of gratitude to divine providence," unquote. Public schoolchildren first recited the pledge during the National School Celebration on the 400th anniversary of Columbus's discovery of America, October 12, 1892.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
Luis Khan, followed by Senator Debbie O'Malley, followed by Rebecca Velarde.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us today. Thank you, Commissioners, for your support of the prioritization of funding for PB&J family services. I want to tell you that I worked there many years ago as a nurse practitioner. It's been 25 years since I worked there. I joined the board just in the last few years because of the need for the service that they provide, which is not currently happening, which is a therapeutic preschool in which a baby and a parent or both parents can actually learn how to be together safely. This is secondary prevention. This is not primary prevention. We're missing this in our system, a way of picking up early babies. We just lost another four-month-old in our And we have no system that immediately gets around and reparents, parents and children together. You can't do it with one or the other without leaving a huge hole in the life of the child and the parent. We have to try some way of not separating families as basically our only choice. We must have some treatment, and we must have secondary prevention, and we must have a building that can support these families. So thank you so much for prioritizing that funding and voting for the families of our community so that maybe we can keep many of them together who would otherwise not be able to be together. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khan.
Senator Debbie O'Malley, followed by Rebecca Velarde, followed by Adam Silverman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I just also want to add my support for PB&J. This is an organization that really needs to be replicated throughout the state. It's been very successful. The outcomes have been remarkable in many ways, and I think that this is an organization that just needs as much support as we can get, and I do appreciate that this commission is behind supporting them. The other item I wanted to speak to was the housing fund, I believe it's 5B, I think, maybe not. But so you've got the, you're prioritizing projects for the county, and I know that, you know, this is in the early, this is the early process, and I think it's going to be really important when we evaluate, when you evaluate projects that you really look at, you know, issues of transportation and services, surrounding housing, I think that's really key. I think that most of you believe that that's important as well. I know that this has been a real concerted effort by the commission and the city and the state to get funding. I mean, considering, and it's not, we still need more, but it's a significant amount, especially if we're talking about projects that just need a little bit of funding or gap funding to get completed. And the important thing, of course, is getting housing on the ground as soon as possible. So I just want to thank you for, I know that, you know, many of the Commissioners were involved in going up to the state advocating for this funding. It was sponsored by, and I appreciate his work as well, Speaker of the House Javier Martinez, and many of us heard the many stories and were very supportive of this funding. So thank you, and, you know, however I can be a resource, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you very much, Senator. We appreciate you being here with us tonight, and thank you for your advocacy and your work on all of these issues, PB&J and housing funding. We are, we're so grateful to have you in the legislature.
Thank you.
Rebecca Velarde, followed by Adam Silverman, followed by Eric Grodal.
Hello, everybody. My name is Rebecca Velarde. I'm the Director of Development for Palindrom. Commissioners, I'm here to express my strong support for all of the transitional and affordable housing projects that you have under consideration for tonight, including the Uptown Connect Project. These projects are critical in order to address Bernalillo County's severe affordable housing shortage, which has left thousands of residents cost-burdened or at risk of homelessness. The proposed projects could provide housing to thousands of individuals, and the Uptown Connect Project specifically, it would provide 239 mixed-income units. I want to commend the Economic Development Department and Marcos Gonzalez for their exceptional partnerships, and I also want to thank the commission. You guys have always been strong supporters of affordable housing, and you really are affecting change in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Adam Silverman, followed by Eric Grodal.
Yes, hi, Commission. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. My name's Adam Silverman. I'm the Vice President here at Geltmore LLC in Albuquerque. And echoing Rebecca's comments and Chris Baca's comments, I really want to praise and just tell everyone how excited I am that the county has taken a stance on getting organized, getting projects together, and really pushing forward on an affordable housing and transitional housing strategy. All the Commissioners I've met with, it's been great to talk about this and educate you all. County Manager Chavez has been absolutely fabulous to work with, and Marcos Gonzalez and his staff. So thank you, guys, for always considering these challenges we have and looking for solutions and working together with the private sector. So I am here to speak in full support of item 9B on your agenda tonight, and specifically the Lomas Tower Apartments. Our development company and my family are strategically looking at how to move downtown forward, and this is one of the projects that I think is really going to be a catalyst going forward over the next five years to get us through the end of the decade. So thank you all for all of your hard work and your service, and all the staff who's put a lot of time and energy vetting these projects, and we really look forward to your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silverman.
Eric Grodal.
Hey, all. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Similar message from me. Eric Grodal, I'm a developer with DBG Properties, but I wanted to also make remarks on item 9B and thank everybody at the state, the legislative branch there, the governor's office, and working with the county for all that you've done for affordable housing with this measure and voiced my support for it. I also want to thank city staff, specifically Marcos Gonzalez, for all his efforts on this. I'm the developer of Tierra Linda Apartments. It's 240 units that is going to be designated for families. And with the development environment that we've had, especially over the last four years with increasing costs and interest rates and everything else, these deals have gotten tighter and tighter. And a lot of the surrounding states of New Mexico and your neighbors have stepped up, and I think that, you know, providing gap fillers like this, and I think that this is a huge step for New Mexico in making a more competitive environment for affordable housing development. And I really appreciate the coordinated effort with you guys. I think this is a fantastic solution. Again, speaking on behalf of specifically the Tierra Linda Project, but also affordable housing in general. We've been there for 30 years. We've had an extensive relationship with Bernalillo County, and I just want to thank you, guys, again, for all your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. This concludes our public comment.
Thank you very much, Javier. That takes us on to item 5, the approval of our consent agenda. Madam Clerk, could you please provide resolution numbers for items 5C, 5E, 5F, and 5G?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 5C is AR 2025-57. 5E is AR 2025-58. 5F is AR 2025-59. 5G1 is FR 2025-60, and 5G2 is FR 2025-61.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public, and all resolutions have been introduced at previous meetings. Therefore, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a second from Vice Chair Barboah. Seeing no discussion on consent, Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair, leave us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes on a 5-0 vote, takes us on to the agenda item that we moved up from the bottom, accounting, the annual comprehensive financial report. comprehensive financial report with Accounting and Budget Director Jackie Sanchez to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Jackie Sanchez, Director of Accounting and Budget. Joining us this evening is Burnaleo County's contracted external auditors Moss Adams LLP, approved by the Office of State Auditor, to present this next agenda item. This is the first year that Moss Adams performed the financial and single audit during the contracted period. I will introduce them shortly. But first, I would like to recognize our Audit Committee, CPA's Mandy Panches, Armando Sanchez, and Attorney Johanna Cox. We are grateful for their dedicated support and volunteer time that they serve the county. Standing behind me, I would like to introduce and thank Attorney Mr. Brian Cologne, Managing Partner of Singleton Schreiber, for his assistance. He served as State Auditor from 2019 to 2023. Thank you to my Accounting General Ledger staff for their rigorous work in completing the FY '24 year-end closing and preparation of the annual financial report, ACFR, and our leadership for their support. This is a motion to accept the annual comprehensive financial report, ACFR, and single audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. Note that the State Auditor has already approved the ACFR. To touch on the background, it is mandated by the Audit Act that the county's annual financial and compliance audit be completed by an independent public accounting IPA firm approved by the State Auditor. Accounting and Budget contracted with Moss Adams LLP to perform the audit for fiscal year ended June 30, 2024, after a change from the originally contracted IPA firm, Carr, Riggs &amp; Ingram. The change in external auditors resulted in an accelerated audit schedule. The entrance conference was held on March 27, 2025, and exit conference was held on May 15, 2025. Federal law also requires that the single audit be performed by federal grant funds in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. Federal awards included the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, the Coronavirus State and Local Recovery Funds, also known as ARPA. In accordance with the Audit Act, Moss Adams LLP submitted the audit reports and draft of the FY '24 ACFR to the Office of State Auditor for final review and the official Following the Board of County Commission acceptance of the FY '24 report, it will become public record and will be submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association for consideration of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. I was able to obtain an extension. The independent auditor report is located at the front of the financial section of Supporting documentations include the ACFR, the Financial Analysis Form, the IPA Auditor's Presentation, and the Office of State Auditor Release Letter. Joining us this evening, we have Corey Hogan, and he's joining us through Zoom, and he will be one of the presenters. We also have Kevin Jankowski right behind me, Senior Manager. And I'd also like to mention Jeff Royball. He was not able to join us, but he's a manager, and, you know, he was very instrumental, and, you know, we're very grateful for all of them. I will now turn it over to Kevin, but if you'll bear with me, I'm going to get the next presentation. I now turn it over to Kevin.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Jankowski. I'm a Senior Manager with Moss Adams, and joining on Zoom is Corey Hogan, partner with Moss Adams. I believe he's going to kick us off if we can get him up on screen.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I want to start by thanking you for the flexibility and allowing me to present remotely tonight. This is not normal, but as Ms. Sanchez alluded to, the entire audit process this year was very compressed, and there was a lot of flexibility required in moving schedules around to allow us to get the audit completed and to be here tonight and get fiscal year '24 wrapped up. We are here to report out on the audits that was completed for the year ended June 30, We, Moss Adams, were contacted by the county in late February 2025, and I met with representatives from the county's management to perform the audit, which had been started by another firm. We were able to work through the contracting and mobilize a team and sign the contracts on March 26 and get started on the audit at that time. We were able to complete the audit work in about six weeks in April and early May. Kevin and I are representing a team of 16 individuals that worked on the audit for our firm that were mobilized from other projects in order to come over and work with the county, and it represented a lot of dedication from county personnel and management, as well as our team, long hours, weekends, and the county was ready to go, obviously. The audit was due back on December 1, but we were able to all work together as both of our teams and to accomplish this, actually, a pretty remarkable feat, considering that we were auditing the county for the first time, and there was a pretty steep learning curve in becoming familiar with how the different departments process transactions and do their jobs and generate financial information. But we all worked together and were able to complete the audit. The report was issued on May 16, and it was released by the State Auditor on May 28, and everything was submitted to the various federal agencies and to the state, the final report before May 31. Moving on to the next slide, please, Kevin. We issued the following reports, as Ms. Sanchez alluded to. The first report we issued as your independent audit firm was the audit on the financial statements of the county. And within the 250 pages that comprise your annual report or your act for the first section, the first major section is the financial section, and that's where the financial statements are found, and our report is on the front of the financial statements, and states that the financial statements are prepared completely and accurately in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles for GAAP. The second report we issue is required under government auditing standards for state and local governments, and that's the report on internal controls over financial reporting and other matters. The third report we issued is specific to your single audit or your federal programs that are administered by the county, and we did audit two major programs this year, primarily related to ARPA funding. And the last report that we issued following the completion of the annual report was a separate report that is for the HUD, your HUD reporting, and that is submitted electronically to HUD, and that was due by May 31 and was submitted on time. We issued what's called an unmodified opinion. We had no exceptions that we had to call out that prevented the county's financial statements from being presented accurately in accordance with GAAP. And again, we issued, everything was released by the State Auditor and finalized before May 31. Moving on to the next slide, just a very brief summary of our audit process. The audit was performed in accordance with the scope and timing that we communicated in our entrance conference on March 27. As we went into the audit, and again, this was a first-year audit for Moss Adams, so there was a lot of discovery and learning curve involved as we went and interviewed people and documented how transactions are processed and financial information is generated. If we found things that weren't in accordance with our expectations or that generated new knowledge, we would modify our audit approach. But primarily, we used three steps in our audit approach. First was consideration of the internal controls that are in place, the checks and balances that are in place in the various departments to monitor those processes. Substantive analytical procedures, that's where we use ratio analysis to develop expectations based on the county's historical records, as well as market trends and external knowledge. And then, to the extent that we're not able to get coverage in those two areas, we design tests of details of balances, and that's where we're selecting samples of transactions in the major transaction areas and testing down to the supporting detail and performing recalculations to test the accuracy of those balances. Go ahead, move on to the next slide.
All right, I will take this from here. As part of our audit, we perform a risk-based audit, and so as part of that risk assessment, we develop areas where we increase our audit focus. And so, for the county's FY '24 audit, we focused heavily on revenue recognition, and as part of that, we performed walkthroughs and testing of internal controls, as well as performed analytical procedures over those balances. We also looked at the reasonableness of management estimates, and the major estimates in the ACFR were legal contingencies, leases and subscription-based IT arrangements, SPITAS, the collectability of receivables, and the actuarial valuations for pension and OPEB. We also had a focus on IT systems that are relevant to financial reporting, and with that, we have a IT group that performs that assessment and test work over those IT systems. And again, those were focused on just systems that were relevant to financial reporting. As Mr. Hogan alluded to earlier, we also performed the federal single audit, and part of that process is testing internal controls directly related to those programs and grants, as well as testing the compliance requirements related to those. The major programs that were tested were Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, or ARPA, and the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Like most audits, we did have findings and recommendations to management that are required to be reported in the ACFR. Management concurred with all reported findings and provided a management response to each. You can find those reported findings in Page 216 of the ACFR, and those are summarized on this slide. And with that, I would just like to give a quick thank you to the county management and staff for being super responsive to us, very open communication with us, and just how timely we were able to get through this audit. So, again, thank you to everyone here today. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Cologne for a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. It's really an honor to be before you, and it's really been a pleasure to watch your work over this course of recent time and the leadership that you've provided. I'm here simply to provide a little context as to why I was introduced and standing behind these great leaders, but I thought, why is Brian around? And the reason is, is because there was a required transition after this audit began, and I would just commend the management team for the county for actually seeking some guidance on how to do that most effectively and efficiently under the audit rule, and somebody thought, you know, Brian's probably not very busy, let's give him a call and see if he and his team can provide some guidance from the legal standpoint. And the reason I came tonight was just to commend the leadership of Burnaleo County. Having served as auditor for New Mexico for four years, I saw a lot of things come and go, but rarely did I see a situation like this that required such leadership and focus during such a short period of time. The reason you see a six-week turnaround of an audit of this nature with the test work that was done, everything from the tone at the top all the way down to the final test work and compliance issues under a single audit, that doesn't happen in six weeks without a lot of people focusing for a very, very short period of time with a level of intensity that they, quite frankly, shouldn't have had to focus under, but that was the leadership you had. I will just add a slight additional comment in saying that not only did you have a brand-new auditor that ended up stepping up in Moss Adams, who's done a substantial amount of great work, both when I was auditor and now under this audit, but you had a, you had some new leadership at the county, and that new leadership sets the tone at the top. And under that leadership and the leadership of your General Counsel, our former Speaker, I can tell you that that laser-like focus came from that level, and everybody in the team pitched in to get this done. And I just am here to say, as a citizen of Burnaleo County and as someone who cares a lot about a lot of people on that dais, it was a great opportunity for me to come and say that I held their hand on the front end in that transition point, but they did the work on the back end to get the job done, and this commission has a lot to be proud of, and that's why I took the time to come here this evening to be with you. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the commission, and thank you most especially to the leadership of the county and the civil servants that work hard every day to serve the people of Burnaleo County, with a particular shout-out to the Finance Division who got the job done. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I rest.
Thank you very much for being here, Mr. Cologne. It's good to see you. Madam County Manager.
May I? So, first, I did also want to say thank you to the commission. I know we had to change course, and we had to do that rapidly, and that really came from all of you, so thank you for that. I did want to just acknowledge a few things. One, the speed and the timing that our staff put into this was really remarkable. They took a process that's normally, what is it, normally like nine months, six months?
Six months.
Normally, six months, and they compacted it into six weeks. I also just want to acknowledge you have one of the most incredible audit committees anywhere. I mean, they are thoughtful, smart, forceful, somewhat scary, I love them, and they really helped us understand how to navigate the waters, and surely to you and Jackie, your team, and for all the sleepless nights that your team put into it. Brian, thank you for helping us get over the hump, and I just wanted to wrap up by saying thank you to council. This was tricky and extremely well-done, and we had to be able to do three things all at once: end a relationship, start a new product, and do it in a way that reflected the values, the ethics, and the intensity of this organization. And then, lastly, I just wanted to say to Moss Adams, they were extremely productive partners, and after the experience we had, I was already loaded for bear, so to speak, and they came in, they were professional, smart, asked great questions, and I think really helped us get through this in a timely fashion. So, really, this, I wanted to say thank you, and actually, the audit results really speak for themselves in many respects, that one of the biggest challenges we had was that we had a late audit, not our fault. So, anyway, so I just wanted to put that on the record as well with a very sincere thank you to the team. Well done, well done.
Thank you, Madam County Manager. Madam Vice Chair Barboa.
Yeah, I'd just like to take the opportunity to also say thank you to all our staff that made this happen. I know this was a lot of work and under a lot of pressure, but thank you so much for all of your leadership, Jackie, and everyone, and I'm not surprised to see you here, Mr. former State Auditor Brian Cologne, because you are always ready to serve our communities, and thank you for all your times of service, including helping through this project. But really, this shows a lot for County Manager. Thank you for getting this across the line. I know we have an incredible team, and it also takes incredible leaderships. Thank you.
And I want to just piggyback on that and say thank you to our county leadership team, County Manager, coming into this pretty fresh and diving right into a big mess. Of course, Mr. Ken Marti- course, Mr. Ken Martinez and your leadership on the legal side, and Deputy County Manager Shirley Reagan, and all of your team at Budget. County manager's been keeping me apprised on this from the very beginning, when there was just, you know, sort of rumblings of an issue happening with the auditor, the former auditor. And so, really tremendous work. I mean, this is a couple billion dollars of auditing work, right, between liabilities and assets and cash, and that's a lot of, I mean, just the money to me blows my mind, but then to think that, you know, we were able to sort of compress all of that into six weeks, working with our team and our outside contractors, it's pretty incredible. Something that I think, you know, we just sort of expect it happens, it has to happen every year, but really, I think, considering the circumstances, yeah, just incredible work, and this was not late, given the circumstances. And the only thing that I would say is, I hope that we can pay it forward to some of our other counterparts, cities and counties, to make sure that what we learned in this audit, or maybe about certain vendors, that kind of thing, is not something that has to affect other entities, and we were able to weather the storm. But others may not have a Mr. Brian Cologne sitting in their backyard ready to step up and help, and such a great finance team, so really appreciate it. Thank you for the great work. With that, I would make a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from the vice chair. Any further discussion on the end of the conference of financial report? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the floor?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Cheryl Levas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes on a 5-0 vote. Thank you. Congratulations on the great work. All right, excuse me, you wait a minute here, just finding my way. All right, next up, we've got Item 7A, Adoption of Ordinance and Amendments to the County Code, Procurement and Business Services Amendment to the County Procurement Ordinance, and we have our Procurement and Business Services Director, Ms. Annie Baca, to present.
Good evening, Cheryl Levas, Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission. My name is Annie Baca, Director of Procurement and Business Services. I am here today to introduce republication amendments to the Burnley County Procurement Ordinance, Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 1, Section 2, 361, exemptions from the procurement ordinance, Section 2, 364, requests for qualifications, Section 2, 368, small purchases, Section 2, 363, 78, contracts. These updates reflect our commitment to fairness, transparency, responsible governance in all county procurement activities. The procurement ordinance was adopted in 2018 and created to ensure equitable treatment in public procurement, maximizing the value of our public funds and promoting both transparency and accountability. The proposed updates take the foundation and build on it, helping us modernize our practices and align with current best practices used by other government bodies. The proposed amendments and goals of the procurement ordinance are as follows. Section 2, 358, definitions. We are refining our RFQ definitions, so we are consistent with all definitions with the ordinance and promote a uniform interpretation of terms. Section 2, 361, exemptions. We are proposing to clarify and expand five exemptions from the ordinance to better serve departments that need flexibility, such as legal, real estate, behavioral health, animal control, youth services center, metropolitan detention center, the county manager and county commission office, while still maintaining oversight, transparency, and documentation. Section 2, 364, requests for qualifications. We are streamlining our process for handling requests for qualifications to better focus on engaging with the most qualified vendors who are interested in doing business with the county. As an important, as part of this improvement, we are updating this section to provide the flexibility to award contracts through either a one-step or two-step process, depending on what the chief procurement officer determines to be the most advantageous to the county. Section 2, 368, small purchases. We are also simplifying the small purchase process by increasing the best obtainable threshold for construction from 20,000 to 100,000. This allows us to move more quickly on mid-range construction and other small projects that will align with current market conditions. Section 2, 378, contract duration. Lastly, we are extending, I'm sorry, lastly, we are extending the allowable duration of professional services contracts from the current limit of six years to eight years. This flexibility will help us align with long-term planning and vendor relationships. These changes are about building a smarter, more responsive, and more capable government. Our goal is to reduce administrative barriers and speed up procurement timelines while maintaining fairness and recognizing the unique needs of county departments. Procurement empowers departments to make timely, community-responsive investments while enhancing our ability to plan long-term and build sustainable vendor relationships. In summary, these amendments will position Burnley County to act more strategically, invest more wisely, and serve our residents more effectively. The proposed amendments are for introduction and publication, and will return for public hearing and final adoption consideration at the August 5th administrative meeting after a 30-day requisite publication period. I want to thank you for your time today and allowing me to present, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baca. Any questions? Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Well, I guess I'd like to first move approval for this.
Second.
Thank you. And yes, my comment, thank you, Chair. I just, I know this is so wonky, and I'm like up here crying, and I don't, I want to be able to speak. It's so wonky, and maybe many don't understand it, but these are the kind, this is something that I've been seeking since I got into office, and I just want to first just thank Deputy County Manager Lisa Sidiouay, I want to thank Annie Santos, as I know her Baca now, and all the staff that worked on it, and definitely our county manager for just, this was done in such a, so thoroughly, you can see the hard work, how smart and effective this is. I love, I was trying to write down some things, but I think this slide that you have up just says it the best, that when we can, I often just think that the county is so important to how our local communities get services, how people who are the most needed were that social safety net, and when we make things like this, then it just loosens up that way to get the money, get the resources to those who need it most. So, I'm crying, I think every piece of this is so important, and I know it took so much work, and y'all did this so quickly, so I'm just so thankful. And of course, folks know that for me, the pieces, that this is going to mean, like, our families and communities that are suffering right now in needing resources around behavioral health, mental health, the work we're trying to do with Community Land Chests to get, you know, money out the door that Ben McIntosh is running around making happen, you know, we, those pieces can happen so much more effectively and efficiently. And I think seeing the word equity up there, it's so huge, right? Because from day one, I've complained that only big entities like UNM or other big places can get part of our contracts, because we have all these sort of, you know, ways that I know were needed maybe to be there, and but now, we can, we can actually provide more opportunity for more people to get our contracts, for things to get and hit the ground in a, in a real equitable, this, all these words are perfect, modernized, empower, build, support. So, I don't have much more words to say, just my huge gratitude for how smart and nimble and strong our staff and our county manager, Sidi Baca, so just thank you all so much for this work, and I really ask for approval from my colleagues.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and I would just say incredible work here. And it's one of the first things that I remember early in our conversations right along, you know, our county manager emphasized the need that this procurement code, the way we do procurement, really guides how we do everything else, right? It's really the basis for how government functions, is what can you procure? What services can you procure? What contracts can you sign or not sign? How long does it take to do that work? This is real government efficiency, okay? That's, this is actually real government efficiency, and I'm not going to use the rest of that acronym, but because it's ridiculous, because this is how you do it, right? You look at processes and you say, how do we make them work better? How do we streamline things in a way that maintains accountability, but acknowledges the reality of just the limited base of providers we have and the limited time window we often have to act on things like real estate transactions. We're in a very competitive market, whether it's labor market, or it's acquisition of land, or any of these things. We have to be able to act quickly and nimbly, and so I see this as the county's commitment through our county manager and our amazing procurement staff to say, we're ready to adjust to the times, and we're going to be ready to show our community that we're ready to step up and you can count on us. I worked the slogan in there, too. So, I think this is terrific and absolutely support this. All right?
May I just say?
Madam County Manager, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. First, I wanted to say how much I appreciated that all of you, when I got here, had a series of issues that you were most concerned about, and I think most people, when they run for office, I know none of you gave a stump speech on procurement, like, who knew you would love it so much? But you identified, and I think the point, Chair, that you raised about the actual efficiency, and I think, Vice Chair, your point about how we actually demonstrate respect for the people we serve, is government needs to work for them, and that's what this is an expression of. I wanted to say one thing, I know Lisa's not here, but to Lisa and Annie, I know all of you had an opportunity to get briefed on this, and you will find no people more joyful about purchasing and procurement than these two women, so you know there was a lot of love that went into this. And, you know, and just to say, as the, as this moves forward, we're going to learn from this, too, and we'll keep adjusting and keep performing, because I think one of the challenges that we need to make sure we're on top of is, as we do new things and we see them work, and we see opportunities to make more work, that we're thinking, I don't mean more work as in more of it, I mean, more mechanisms for making ourselves more efficient and more effective, that we're going to continue to rely on you, because this was really inspired by all of you and the direction that you gave us. And you saw some holes, and thank you for seeing them and giving us the support to get it done. But Annie, Lisa, just really, yay for procurement. Well done. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion, we'll close the floor. Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Cheryl Levas.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes on a 5-0 vote, and we'll see it again in early August.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, Item 8, Adoption of Resolutions, and first up, we have our Civil Legal Services Fund sponsored by Commission Vice Chair Barboah.
Thank you, Chair. I am really excited to, this is the final, we did introductions at our previous meeting, this will be tonight's final vote on the Civil Legal Services Fund. I won't talk too much, but just to say that, you know, there is, though, this was actually brought to me by community, and everything I've learned in my service so far is that when communities have good ideas, just get them the resources they need to make that happen, and I think this is another, we, has really recognized that there's a need to address the inequities in access to civil legal services that in our, throughout our county right now, and there's an overwhelming lead, and this, and so, we've together worked to build, and I'm asking our county manager to make it happen, that we can commit $250,000 to a civil legal services fund that will help address inequities to access to civil legal services for Burnley County residents. I ask, I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, and I ask my colleagues to support this.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I got to take a quick step back here, if we can just pause on that. I missed a step. Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers for several items on number eight?
Yes, sir, I can do that, Mr. Chair. Item 8A, AR 2025-62, 8B1, AR 2025-63, 8B2, AR 2025-64, 8C is AR 2025-65, and 8D is FR 2025-66.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Sorry for my error there. So, we'll go back to the Civil Legal Services Fund, and we've got a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion on this? I just wanted to say thank you to our county manager, county attorney, for reaching out and getting me some more information on this, and my only issue with it is it's probably not enough, but this is where we start.
Thank you.
With that, if there's no further discussion, if you must say anything else. Okay, we'll close the floor, and Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
No.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Cheryl Levas.
Yes, passes on a 4-1 vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Up next, Item B, Economic Development, Project Revenue Bond Amendment Notice of Intent for Desert Willow and Villa Hermosa Extension with Economic Development Director Marcos Gonzalez to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a resolution extension for Villa Hermosa and Desert Willow Apartments. Project Revenue Bond, again, is a tool we have in the economic development area to allow for folks to access the 4% loan income housing tax credits and lower cost of bond issuance on the equity side, and also tax exemption, which provides much-needed capital into their capital stack to make projects feasible. The two projects we're talking about today, again, are Villa Hermosa and Desert Willow. These are both existing affordable housing projects that are being redeveloped by Dominion. We had initially done the introduction back in January, and they are still working through their tax credit letter with MFA or Housing New Mexico, and need some additional time. The inducement resolution would be terminate in July, so we're bringing it forward now to extend it for another 100 and days, so we can close it after the commission break. This is just a quick chart on the Aryan median income, and the both apartment complexes will be in the 60% AMI range. And so Villa Hermosa, again, is a 288-unit apartment complex, and Desert Willow is 224 units, and once this is approved, both apartments will remain affordable for the next 30 years at the 60% AMI level. And so, once again, this is just approving the inducement resolution to extend for another 180 days, and we will be back for final action shortly after the midterm break. But with that, I stand for any questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Director. Do we have a motion on this item?
I move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Barbara Baca, and a second from the Vice Chair. Any discussion? I don't know if I caught a description of why they needed the additional time. Is there a particular?
Mr. Chair, they are still working through getting their tax letter from the Mortgage Finance Authority, and we can't close until we have that tax letter with Housing New Mexico.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, yes, Vice Chair Barboah.
One question, I was, oh. One question, I support this, but on the little, on the chart that you have on this presentation, you said 60% AMI, that AMI, that the majority of folks in the, would be at that level? That's great. So, it's not, because sometimes I feel like we're just taking like the absolutely have no money, or you can't get affordable, but this is actually at a little bit higher level, so folks that can still work and make some funds, but still get an affordable place. Great, thanks for pointing that out.
Mr. Chair and Madam Vice Chair, yes, you're correct.
Thanks, thanks for pointing that out. That is all.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll close the floor, and Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Cheryl Levas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes five zero. Thank you, Director. Next up, we have Designating Burnaleo County Polling Places and Precinct Consolidations for the 2026-2027 elections. And we have Deputy Clerk Kelly Baca to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I am not Deputy Clerk Kelly Baca. My name is Nathan Hadameo. I am the Bureau of Elections Administrator for Burnaleo County. Today, I'm going to speak on the resolution and respectfully request the passing of the resolution for the designation of polling places for the 2026 and 2027 elections in Burnaleo County. Second, I will pull up this PowerPoint. Okay. We respectfully request the passing of the polling place designation for the precinct and consolidation of the 2026-2027 elections. The reason for the request is it's statutorily mandated. It is an administrative function that transpires after every presidential election. It is done so in accordance with state statute to also evoke transparency of all the voting locations within the respective 33 counties in Burnaleo or in New Mexico. So these particular elections will entail the 2026 primary election, the 2026 general election, and the 2027 consolidated local election. The urgency is mandated in accordance with NMSA 1-3-2. And it requires approval in June or July of the odd numbered years, again, after the presidential election. We are respectfully requesting the suspension of the rules to adopt at this introduction to meet the statutory deadlines prior to July. The reason for is we currently have 424,814 registered voters in Burnaleo County. Now, that is not a static number. It's fluid as we speak. That number might be changed because we have people registering to vote consistently throughout the year. The resolution supports use of 74 voting convenience centers. And previously, prior to 2012, they were precinct based where you could only vote at your respective precinct. Since then, since the passing of the resolution in the legislature to allow voting convenience centers, it's allowed flexibility and coverage that people can vote anywhere throughout Burnaleo County if they're a registered voter in Burnaleo County. The VCC model provides higher voter satisfaction, lower wait times. We've seen that with historical data. Improved access in diverse communities embodying Burnaleo County. And also, we want to denote that there's no financial impact necessarily. It is an administrative function in the passing of this resolution. And I have provided the aforementioned financial analysis form in the initial documents with the resolution and the respective attachment A, 2026/2027. This particular resolution ensures compliance with NMSA 1-3-2 and 1-3-4, which allows the commission, by virtue of their position, to pass this resolution to designate the 74 locations that we're requesting. It prioritizes, in accordance with the statute, with the federal guidelines for Americans with disabilities, which we take very stringently. We actually go out to all 74 locations. We ensure compliance. We have certain checklists. We partner with Disability Rights of New Mexico to ensure compliance as well. It also provides geographic equity. We make sure that we have strategically placed locations throughout all of the communities that embody Burnaleo County to allow access for every registered voter with ease. And we also look at logistical feasibility. We even look at bus lines. We look at transportation issues. And we look at making sure it's in a publicly visible location to ensure that people are adequately prepared to vote and educated to vote at those locations. The plan includes the designation of 74 voting convenience centers, as we previously mentioned. It also allows for resource efficiency. We typically utilize the same locations throughout every year. So that ensures that there's no confusion that, hey, there was a voting location at this location and now there's not. So we consistently try to keep them at those specific locations without contingent upon any sort of issues typically at schools if they're doing any sort of construction or anything like that. Then we'll make a necessary change, but we make sure we make a good effort to educate all of the voters in that respective area in Burnaleo County for that matter. We also look at secure locations to ensure compliance with all of the state statutes. We ensure that everything is, the integrity of the elections secure with lockability, ensuring who has access to those locations. We limit the access to specific locations and specific individuals. And then we also utilize historical data for the throughput of those locations to ensure that we are providing the necessary equipment, voting systems, tabulators, and any sort of staffing needs to ensure that we are handling the volume with respect of that typical area. And so we typically use a throughput and we do projections of the locations as well as how many staff we will need, how many tabulators we'll need, how many ballot on demand systems, or some people know them as check-in systems, how many booths, how many other type of equipment that we're going to need to make sure we're successful and have a very successful voting experience for all the constituents of Burnaleo County. What we're requesting today is that the resolution be approved so that we can, one, formally notify the Secretary of State and the Office of that particular approval of the resolution. Also, public notice requirements on our websites. We do do education and outreach to ensure that the constituents are aware of any necessary changes. And then after that, we launch a full-out campaign in preparation for the elections via social media, media platforms, and our own very website to make sure that everyone is aware of the necessary locations that we'll have for the respective elections for 2026 and 2027. One thing I also wanted to note at the end of this is that we typically had 72 locations previously and 20 early voting sites. We did look at historical data and growth in certain communities of interest. And we did add another location at Mesa del Sol Community because previously, we didn't have a location there. And we did try to identify a location, which we found, the UNA Media and Arts location. And then also on the west side, in between Ladera and Central, we found Painted Sky Elementary, which allowed us to grow in that community as well. And so we can continue providing excellent wait times and access for the communities. Thank you for your time and I will now stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hadameo. Questions, Commissioners?
I move approval.
Second.
Yeah, they mostly just wanted to commend our clerk and our, all our staff that are really doing this and the thoroughness. Thank you for the thoroughness of this report. I'm glad to see two more sites open, more access, the better. And just really thank you. I think we run such a good important ship and thank you for your work. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Just real briefly, thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to thank you for the additional sites in growth communities. And it's very important that we make these accessible as our population grows. So thank you for your good work on this.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
First of all, thank you, Nathan, for coming up and presenting today. We really appreciate it. And deputies in the background, Danine and Kelly, thank you for being here. I just wanted to say, though, to keep your eyes open and your ears open because we have more great, exciting news coming up here in the summer ahead of us. So accessibility is the name of the game and we are doing everything we can to expand access.
Fantastic. Well, I have you all here from the clerk's office. I wanted to raise one issue that came to my attention in the last regular local election cycle. But I think it's probably an issue off and on throughout time, particularly at these locations that we rent, which are most of the early voting locations, very popular. It came to my attention, I think county attorney knows where I'm going, that we had individual property owners disallowing certain candidates from putting signs on their properties. And this is just my suggestion or, you know, my input, whatever, is, I think that's fine. If a property owner, they own the private property and they don't want to have any signs on their property, because I think it looks pretty bad, honestly. That's fine. But I think that it, I'm just suggesting that in our terms of negotiating those leases and those types of things, that that's something I would hope comes on our radar, if it's not already, that we should be making sure that there's some level of fairness there, right? It's kind of an all or nothing. If you're going to let people put up signs, then everybody's got to be able to put up signs. And if you're not, then, you know, nobody should be putting up signs there. But I think, given that it's an election site, it's a little different than just a regular piece of private property where, you know, if I own a strip mall and there's no voting location and I want to put up a sign that supports a candidate or doesn't support a candidate, that's fine. It's my choice. But if we're using government money to rent a location, I just feel like we should be making sure that it's fair, one way or another. And so I just wanted to throw that out there, not necessarily for this item, but for future. Thank you. Yeah, Madam Vice Chair.
I just want to make one more comment and give accolades to both our county clerk and to our warden. We ran successful for, not the first time, voting in our jail. And I believe we had like 100 and plus some people vote from our jail. And I'm just really proud of that. Thank you for making it happen.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. All right, with that, we'll close the floor. And Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Cheryl Levas.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes on a five zero vote. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the commission.
All right, next up, we have Technical Services, the Mesa del Sol Parking Lot. And we don't have Technical Services Director Brian Lopez. We have our Deputy County Manager, Elias Sartreletta. Red is on.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This evening, I'm presenting for Director Lopez, who's off on vacation this today. As I said, I'm Elias Sartreletta, I'm Deputy County Manager for Public Works. And tonight, I'm presenting the financial resolution in support of the Mesa del Sol Parking Lot, Phase One. Tonight, we're requesting the introduction and approval of a financial resolution to appropriate $2.5 million for, in general fund balance to support the construction of the first phase of the Mesa del Sol Parking Lot. In addition, we're requesting the BCC authorized county manager to award and execute the construction contract for this project as we are attempting to expedite the project in the hopes of completing it within the current Live Nation concert season. The additional parking capacity is needed to accommodate the parking demand for several sold-out shows, of which we've been seeing more and more of over the last couple of years for the amphitheater and to accommodate overflow parking for events that we have that are utilizing our county recreational facilities. Due to funding availabilities, the project will be executed in phases. And Phase One will include the construction of approximately 300 parking spaces, improvements to the east access road to the new lot, construction of a pedestrian path, and enhancements to the existing Bobby Foster Access Road, which you can see in green near the bottom of the screen there. The total project area spans 40 acres, which includes a parking lot located atop of an existing landfill, which requires us to coordinate the design with the New Mexico Environment Department. The project schedule, we've completed the design here at the end of May. And with the approval tonight, we anticipate starting construction here early summer of 2025. And with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sartreletta. Questions, or actually, do we have a motion? Did you want to make a motion?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'm just trying to understand the funding source, if you would mind, or somebody on the staff to address that. Just so I'm clear about that. General budget, general fund balance. Could somebody just please explain to me what that sources?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Baca, I will defer to Deputy County Manager Reagan.
Cheryl Levas, Commissioner Frank Baca. In the general fund, fund balance, and I had presented you guys, provided a presentation a few months back of what's in there. We had in the capital portion of fund balance that was assigned, $2.5 million for this project. We hadn't appropriated it yet because we were waiting on the design to come in. And we try to time our appropriations with the timing of when the funding is needed. So it's sitting there. It has been reserved, it's in the FY '24 fund balance, assigned fund balance category.
So just, I'm just trying to understand this. So the original sources, my understanding has been sitting there for a while, but the original source of the funding is what?
Well, it's, the fund balance, as you know, is from an accumulation of several things. So at the end of any fiscal year, if your revenues exceed what you budgeted, that creates fund balance. If your expenditures are lower, your actual expenditures are lower than your budget, that creates fund balance. So at that time, we look at what things we might need to fund or supplement based on capital projects and things that are going on. And the county manager and the deputy county manager of finance, have your, you've delegated authority to them to assign fund balance. We can't appropriate it, but we can assign it to projects. And then we come back to you when we're actually ready to appropriate that funding. And the other part of this is we are responsible for the maintenance and all of the work on that with Live Nation on maintaining that area and the parking around the amphitheater. So this is something that we have to do at some point in time. And we have, you know, contracts in place, but this is part of that as well.
Right, thank you. And I do understand there's some lease obligations to provide parking. I think I was briefed on that. But yeah, I was just not clear about the accumulation of that money and then to be used for this specific purpose. So anyway, but no, thank you so much, appreciate it.
I'm happy to go over it in more detail with you. I had, we had a presentation, but basically, like I said, it's just savings. And understanding the operations of the county, the county manager and the deputy county manager, working with departments, will say this, we're going to have a shortfall here. So here is some funding that we could assign there.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion? Or do we have a motion on the table?
I can move.
Okay, we have a motion from the Vice Chair. I'll second. So I wanted to just say something briefly about what Commissioner Frank Baca was asking about. And I mean, I know that this is all kind of mixed in one pot, all of the fund balance. But a couple of years ago, when I was digging into this and working with Deputy County Manager on this, there was a large pot of money that was reserved for the atrium. And in the most recent version of fund balance, that money was no longer there. So would it be fair to say that it was moved from that project to other projects? Like this one? Okay.
Let me respond to that.
Madam County.
Yeah, thank you. And that's, it is true that what we were responding to, frankly, was that there wasn't support from the commission to move that project. And you all made that crystal clear to me when I got here. So it is true that that money could have been dispersed somewhere else, but we didn't, we didn't actually have, I mean, these are monies that we're planning to expand. And so I don't know where this one was in process. Did the atrium have money assigned to it?
Yes, the atrium had money assigned to it because that project was on the table for several years. And the management decision, it was not supported when it was brought forth to commission. So instead of continuing to tie that funds up, we moved it to other things. Again, just reassigning it, not appropriating it.
And so the reason I mention that is that in the next couple of items or a few items down, we're going to have, begin having the discussion about the IC we're gonna have, begin having the discussion about the ICIP and the CIP. And really what I, what um, I just wanna make sure we're crystal clear about is that we're continuing to move forward using the practices and policies that we have in place. But we are gonna be coming back to in the fall with changes and clarity to those. Uh, because right now, um, the question you're asking is, it's a really good one. And I would much rather be able to say, these are what you prioritized, here's how we're um, layering on the resources and then making sure that that list is, has multiple affirmations as we're going through the process. And we're not there yet, but we will get there.
Thank you very much. And, and that was kind of the point I was trying to make is that, that, you know, projects fall off, fall on. I'm not quite sure how they get there, and that's what we're working on, is sort of, what is that process to make sure that there's, as you said, many sets of eyes uh, on that.
Transparency, predictability, right? And you can have some good arguments right here, so we're looking forward to that, we're just delighted.
And, and this, this is, you know, an example, just as the atrium was, of sort of a, you know, it kind of comes out of nowhere. I'm not saying that means it's bad or good, it's just, you know, the staff recognizes the need and then they look for funding and, and, you know, things float. So, so we have to, to take a look at that process and, and see how these sorts of things get prioritized. But my main question on this is it mentions Bobby Foster Road on here. And that is a, a sore spot that I've talked to the developer out there about the condition on, of that road and the backups. So that's not actually in Phase One that we're funding tonight, but it is on the radar?
Mr. Chair, uh, no, that is not in Phase One of this. Uh, the, the Bobby Foster references, either the access road that connects to Bobby Foster is what we're improving. Uh, but we, as county manager mentioned, as we're prioritizing projects, one of the issues that's gonna come up is Bobby Foster Road. Uh, that road is, uh, technically, it's actually in the city, it's city jurisdiction. And as the property owner to the north of Bobby Foster, uh, even though we lease it from the state land office, it's our obligation, it, it's gonna be o- our obligation to construct half of those improvements. Uh, the developer on the south end of that is responsible for constructing their half. As you can, as you can see, as they're developing kind of from the east to the west, the developer is building kind, is, is starting to construct their portion of the road from uncertain, or from Universe, I'm sorry, moving west, sorry, West Side Her Blood. From uh, Universe moving west uh, towards that. As they develop those properties, they're constructing their portion of the road. As we continue to develop the recreational site and we start uh, hitting the boundaries of Bobby Foster and moving to the west, we are gonna have to start programming that. Uh, as you'll see coming up in, in, within the next year, we did, we are responsible for a portion of, of uh, Uni- uh, Universe Boulevard. And it's essentially the portion that's adjacent to the existing paved parking lot. We have that programmed and moving forward because it's come due for us to build out our portion of that. So it's, it's, it's one of those roads that does need to be worked into our CIP because we do have those obligations to do that as we build out. Because essentially, the way the, the road is sitting there, it, it is only a three lane road on a fairly thin section that was constructed uh, as the first phase of Mesa del Sol was being built in the late nineties, early two thousands. So it is, you know, the, 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 your opinion on the condition of the road is well founded. But it, it is gonna be a shared expense between us and the developer.
Very good, that answers my question. Thank you. Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Yeah, um, thank you for bringing this. I, I had some questions last time just 'cause I still wanna know how all the things work up there. But I, I do live really close to, I live right off of Gibson, so I probably live the closest to Mesa del Sol as a commissioner. And I really was just up there, I was invited to do some stuff with Yaffle. It just looks great up there, the work going up there is awesome. It's a really thriving community and I think it's um, good that we incentivize it. And our partnership with Live Nation is important. And again, another thing that brings people entertainment in our states, they can do some good stuff and not be out doing malice. But that way, so I'm glad we're gonna have, and, and it will hopefully decrease some of the dust on some of those windy days up there. But um, thanks a lot for bringing this and I ask for approval from my colleagues.
All right, seeing no further discussion, we'll close the floor. And Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbola.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes on a five zero vote. And I believe next up, we have uh, introduction of resolutions. We have a very exciting item, very important, top priority of, of the county frankly. Transitional and affordable housing project priorities presented by Madam County Manager.
All right, well, good evening again. Um, and I am really excited to have a chance to talk to you about housing. I think that's one of your favorite subjects, and so now it is one of mine. So, Mr. Chair, members of the com- commission, what you have before you is an introduction of the administrative resolution for the acquisition and construction of transitional and affordable housing priority projects in Bernalillo County. The, um, and what you'll, what we're asking you to do is authorize the county manager to approve the property and purchase agreements and to award a request for proposal for property management services for affordable housing and tr- transitional housing projects as needed. In addition, we're also requesting the approval to authorize the county manager to approve agreements, amendments, and subsequent agreements related to property purchases, agreements and solicitations for affordable and transitional housing. And I know that is a lot of information. So let me just start by saying a couple of sort of universal thank yous. So one, under your leadership and direction, you prioritized housing in this legislative session. The Housing Collaborative, under the leadership of Commissioner Barbara Baca and other leaders, started to put together a very large list of projects. Actually, this has probably been going on almost a year and a half, I would guess by now, of projects that we thought, that you thought would make sense to be funded and invested in. And frankly, challenging the state to make an investment, a significant investment in housing. The original investment request was for a hundred and seventy-nine million dollars. And um, again, through your leadership, and I wanted to just say to Commissioner Baca, I think that, that everybody told you it wasn't possible and a hundred and ten million got awarded um, to this project. Now, let me, let me also add that um, you can see, I'm, I'm just, I'm not gonna read the slide, but what's really interesting about this is that the state, during their legislative process, the governor's office took leadership over the hundred and ten million dollars. One of the important benefits of that was it allowed the, the um, governor under, through the leadership of Secretary Serena Nayer to not only take the hundred and ten million that was allotted this year, but take another forty million that had not been spent. So they now have a hundred and fifty million to invest right now. Now, what's been crystal, what's been made crystal clear to us is that, um, that they have a goal of investing all of this money by June twenty twenty-six. And that's very important because what that means is that they're gonna, they're challenging us the same way we were challenging them, which is to say, we're ready to go, we're ready to go, we're ready to go. And now they're saying, we're ready to go, tag, you're it. So, which is partly why I'm here today. So the, the proposed projects that you have in front of you or that are in your packet will give us the opportunity to house approximately seventeen hundred residents and, uh, and in affordable housing and over a thousand residents in transitional housing. Now, those are really big numbers, but part of the goal, we think, is to move quickly and demonstrate that by investing in local government, we can actually move people off the streets and into safe, secure housing. So what you'll see on, on our list of priorities is a couple things. And I, I wanna also just point out that one of the directions that you gave us, um, to, you gave the staff, was to ensure that we were working collaboratively with the city of Albuquerque. And that was very important. I think that's partly why we had such great success. And, and our speaker, Javier Martinez, played a huge role as um, a number of other leaders did. But in making sure that that money um, was made available. And in part, because people were so excited that we were actually collaborating, they, it gave them hope that if they invested the money, we'd be able to show big improvements in the county. So, and, and, and I also just wanted to acknowledge um, uh, Commissioner Baca, that, uh, Commissioner Barbara Baca, that, that Marcos let me know something I did not know. And that was when the list got created, that that was actually an initiation um, in partnership with Councilmember Feeble Corn. So it really was rooted in this idea that if we partner together, we're gonna be able to have more success than if we just, you know, sort of s- uh, continued to compete with each other. So through our, um, through our process, I just wanted to describe why we're taking the approach we are, what's in your packet, and then some considerations that we're making as we think about next steps. What we decided to do was approach this project using the initial list and breaking it down in a way that we thought would meet multiple goals. So you have affordable housing um, on the list, and this is partnering with the city of Albuquerque. We're focusing on investing in gap financing. What that means is that the project has gone all the way through the process. And with this gap financing, they will be able to break ground within the next thirty, forty-five days. So we have projects on the list that can break ground as early as July if they get that gap financing. Those are the two top that you see on the affordable housing section. On preservation or expansion of affordable housing, really because we have this brilliant staff, including Ben, we, we looked at what could we invest in that had the least amount of risk and the most amount of return? And one of those was to look at apartment complexes. And we did find an apartment complex that had some affordable housing in it, but is now on the market for market rate housing, uh, as a market rate project and product. And for us, um, one of the things that we don't have as much of as we'd like is family housing. This is a family housing development. And again, it's got its certificate of occupancy, we don't, we will need to make no changes. It allows us right away to start transitioning people in anywhere from thirty percent of AMI to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. And part of the reason we wanna keep that number broad is we have to figure out a way to maintain and um, get these projects to be somewhat sustainable so that we're not at the whim necessarily of, you know, a presidential, um, I mean, a, a president or even the state in terms of us being responsible and being able to manage these buildings. So what that means is we're gonna be looking at um, broad sectors of affordability. Let me also make one other point, we know this from research, that very low income families do better in mixed income environments. And especially children, and that's, you know, we're laser focused on the well-being of children in our community. Transitional housing, the staff again did a great job of finding products that are on the market. Many of these, we've had a chance to brief, um, brief you on, but some of them are new because they're just going on the market and we didn't wanna miss an opportunity. So they're on our list concurrent to us vetting them. But here's what's important, every one of these projects has a certificate of occupancy. Every one of them, by right, we can put people um, into these, um, these homes. And what was very important to the state, that they made really clear to us, is that they didn't want us to be part of creating that pipeline where we house people for thirty days and then just kick them out and, and uh, created more instability in the community. The fantastic thing is, under the leadership of your behavioral health department, we're learning how to help people transition from transitional housing into permanent housing. And this gives us that opportunity to build out that pipeline again with our partners in the city of Albuquerque. Um, and then infrastructure for housing, and you, you heard Chris come and speak from Yes Housing. And one of the things that the governor's office insisted on, and I learned this from Secretary Nayer, is that they wanted to make sure that if there were infrastructure problems that were impeding a project's ability to go forward, that we had the resources we needed to deal with those. That could be water, it could be utilities, it could be a, a major stop, um, you know, four-way crossing or a stoplights. Those are very, very expensive. And so making sure that we, they built that in was really at their request. And worked, and because developers have gone to them directly, you'll see some folks on the list that um, the governor's office said, hey, are you interested? We're interested. So let me see if I, ah, so here are a list of those proposed projects geographically. And, and I, I just wanna say that um, earlier, there was a comment, and I, I apologize that I can't recall which of you said this, but, oh, actually, it was Senator O'Malley who said, let's make sure you're thinking about transportation and services. These, most of these um, uh, housing developments, all are along major thoroughfares that do have access to public transportation. And we certainly understand that we're gonna need to provide services. And one of the things that we know will be a next phase is, as the governor chooses um, projects that they're interested in investing in, we'll be looking at the populations that would be best served at those and look at the service models that they need. One of the reasons we wanna be careful about this is that we know there's a lot of literature that demonstrates that fidelity to programming matters. And what that means is that in some instances, we actually overdose people with services and it doesn't help them succeed. So we're gonna be very customized, very thoughtful, and make sure this is a learning experience for all of us and also to be more cost effective as well. Let me see, so these are the affordable housing projects that are, are in your, uh, in your packet. Um, I will say that Terralinda and Wes Mesa are a little further ahead. One challenge that Uptown is having, and I, I really, I just wanna say how much I appreciate the developers um, calling in. And, and I wanna say this too, we have a lot of people who come who wanna build market rate housing. When developers are interested in building affordable housing, we have to help them succeed. Like that, that sort of goes in the category of, it's hard to do and no good deed goes unpunished. So we're, um, we're focused on all four of these. We recognize that Uptown Connect could have a challenge primarily because of uh, the federal government making ch- different choices about how they wanna spend money or invest um, in our communities. Um, and Loma's Towers has a, a capital stack that's very complex, but they've got a plan to move forward. Um, and so we're gonna need to continue to bet that in terms of timing. Because again, the, the governor was very specific, the governor's office was specific with us that they wanted these investments to be able to be made by June thirtieth. Now, um, just as a side note, we also recognize that if the governor's office does a Phase Two and we think that if we can demonstrate that we can invest these monies, that we get to go back to the legislature and say, here's what we need next. You all had asked um, the staff to take a look at a project, for example, Union Square. Union Square is a piece of property that we own. We've done a Phase One environmental on that um, project. We are currently continuing to do research on um, what um, environmental needs it, it may require. We will begin um, Phase Two uh, environmentals and have an opportunity to bring to you a, a format that we think is, is gonna be very viable there. Now, what's exciting about that particular location is not only do you have a historic building that can be made even more beautiful, but the footprint there is big enough to add a whole additional building, which gives us even more units. And we won't stop, like, we're gonna work on this um, this lane of work, but we're also gonna be looking at public-private partnerships. And because of the changes that your staff made in our, is, uh, making in our procurement process, it's gonna give us the opportunity to RFQ some of these projects as they get online, to look for those private partners, because we're not gonna be able to rely on just one source of revenue. And I rem- was reminding myself to, you, you're right, Commissioner, I looked in my document and I didn't see it either, but I wanted you to know that was on my radar. Um, preservation and expansion, what you see here are three projects. Our staff has just been diligent about looking for properties that are newer, who, even though we're gonna be do- doing due diligence, we don't anticipate any surprises in any of these projects, which is why they're also on this list. And then um, for transitional housing, similar, we're looking at um, properties that have been recently redeveloped. And they, for us, we're prioritizing them based on where we will have, we think, the least amount of surprises and be able to move people in the most quickly. Now, with all of these developments, um, one thing I, I just wanna really acknowledge, we are adding human beings to neighborhoods. That will require us to work closely with the neighborhood leadership to create good neighbor committees and really build out that kind of partnership. And I just wanna, if you'll indulge me a moment, tell a very quick story. And that is that, you know, one of my, um, one of my experiences uh, building tiny homes in a community was that when we went out to the neighborhood and we had some folks that were really, really concerned and raised a lot of issues. And we were able to deal with most of them in design, but some of the most, for with most of them in design, but some of the most resisterous folks became the biggest advocates for that development. They fell in love with it, they owned it. And one of the people that I would say was the most concerned about it actually leads their holiday programming, so helps the neighborhood collect resources for Halloween, Christmas, and Thanksgiving. And, and you know, that happens because people get to know each other, build trust, and we, if we own and operate a piece of property, we have to be the best house on the block, period. And that will be a commitment I'll make to you that we will follow through on. So last, and really, the staff said, just in case you need it, I, I just wanted to explain what 120% of AMI is. And the reason is that normally, when we're looking at affordable housing projects, the 30% kind of get cut off because the subsidies are so high, and 120% get cut off because they, they need it less. And the fact of the matter is, we have a lot of people that fall within that entire range, and we're going to have to figure out how our programming is, is all-encompassing. And I, I thought in particular, if you think about, like, looking at some of these numbers, it's hard to imagine, really, having a family of four and $25,000 a year. And so, but, you know, 103,000 isn't much either when you look at the ticket price for people to buy their own homes. I mean, it is really an expensive venture. So with that, I'm going to stop. I know that is an awful lot of information, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and I have a really great staff here ready to respond as well.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And County Manager, thank you, thank you, thank you for putting this into such well-thought-out, well-described, in a short period of time, you know, with a lot of information. As you said, you know, we, we started the Housing Collaborative between the city and the county probably about two years ago with our partners on city council and the administration, and we joined hands, and we know that that's a difficult partnership to put together. This is a successful day that we are moving forward because as we learned from, we, we met with several of our leadership in the House and Senate, our legislature is behind this, and they specifically said, this was funded because you are collaborating. So your statement about the state and our senator, our own Senator O'Malley, former commissioner, saying the state is also going with us hand in hand to address this problem that we have, we know we have a housing crisis and a homeless crisis. This is a, an ambitious and bold plan. I think it's important to say for the community that we want you to be at the table, at, on the street, in our offices, talking with us about making this successful. Because of that crisis on housing and homelessness, we all have got to, as Speaker Javier Martinez says, all hands on deck. And so I wanted to explain to those watching and those participating in this, this is a, an ambitious list. All of these projects will not be funded by this funding, although it was quite successful to get this, or to now the governor to throw in the additional, so we have 150 million, which seems to regular folks like me, that's a lot of money. But everybody who's in housing says, really, not so much, because it's such an expensive proposition. So I really wanted my constituents and the constituents of Albuquerque and Burnley County, actually, the state of New Mexico. One of the things you have in this report is that the new measurement of homelessness show, from the Department of Health, shows that 60% of our state's homeless population is here in Burnley County. So we are taking a real leadership role and a bold step here today to say, these are options, we need to take action. The state is there, working with us hand in hand to move some of these projects forward, and our community needs to be with us to do this, because we don't want to see people on the curb, we don't want to see people in tents, we want to see people sheltered. And this is a menu of many different types of shelter within our community. They, they are we, we are they. And so I want to thank you for this very bold and ambitious effort, and this has been introduced tonight. This isn't, we, we have time before we actually approve and, and move this forward. We've already had some requests from neighborhoods in, in my district to say, talk to us more about what you mean by the preservation and expansion of affordable housing. We, we're, we're here to do that. That's a really important component, or the infrastructure component of this. So I, I just want to say to, to our community and to our partners at the state and the city that we're here, ready to, to move forward hand in hand. It, it really truly does have to be all hands on deck. So thank you for that, appreciate it.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move approval.
All right.
Second?
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Barbara Baca, a second from Vice Chair Barboya, Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes, thank you. I have not been involved in this, I've been on the sidelines just learning about this last six months, but I will say I'm very impressed and very happy that this is going forward, especially the way it's been categorized and organized. I just think that is a very good, smart way to approach the issue of homelessness. And I, I, one of the things that, to me, is most important aspect of this, of the transitional housing part of it, because that is something I didn't know about probably a year ago, and now it's one of my most important topics personally, is just in terms of addressing a very basic issue, not, not just housing, but behavioral health issue. And I've been convinced by touring a number of facilities, you have to do both. You have to have the treatment, but people have to have a place to live, and they go hand in hand. So I just think that the, the approach is great. The idea of concentrating on transitional housing and services is, is, is something that really, I really support. I like some of the other terms that have been used, of public-private partnership, I think is, is something I'm glad to hear. Idea of community engagement with the neighborhoods is something that's really important, because this affects people, you know, where they live. And I'd just like to make one comment about the, the tiny home village. I remember a few years ago, when it was quite controversial, and I think there might have even been a Larry Barker or two investigation of that project, and there's some criticism of it, and it's a lack of capacity. Well, we went on a tour of that a couple of months ago, and that is an impressive, impressive, capital I, capital letters, impressive facility and organization. So whoever investigated that and looked into that a few years ago, I hope they would go back and look at it today and see what it's doing for people's lives, see how well-run it is, how oppressive it is. And I'm just simply glad to see that part of this proposal is to increase the size of that, of that facility. It's a very well-run facility. So congratulations, everybody. It wasn't me, but everybody else here on this desk that did so much to support that, and I'm just here to applaud you, and, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, gosh, rounds, thank you, everyone. I wanted to say, you know, when I, my first year, Commissioner O'Malley and Ike Benton actually brought, or, yeah, anyways, when my second year or something like that, brought this forward. And then you all got on as new commissioners, Commissioner O'Malley went on, and now is a senator. But I've just been so thankful, I know Commissioner Levas, you and Commissioner Barbara Baca sat on that first committee. So this has taken a lot of work over quite some time, but both of your all's leadership on that. And I know Commissioner Barbara Baca, you really whipped those votes, made sure our legislature understood how important there was, that this was to invest in, and did. And I don't think even myself was like, oh, we're probably not going to get that much. But y'all did incredible, so what a great, what great work. And then, gosh, I'm so glad you're standing there, Ben McIntosh, because we got him. He's like, he can, he rounds up the properties, he makes things happen, hardworking. Thank you so much for all the service. I just know, I felt like this is going to be so successful because we have such great leadership, such hard work across our whole county, but I definitely know Ben McIntosh is doing such great work. And Tark County Manager, man, you got on, took the reins by the, took the bull by the horns, and here we are. I'm just so thankful, and I, I'm really thankful for the, the title of this, Transitional Affordable Housing. I think I kept sort of fighting for it because we, because it's so hard to, because it's so nuanced, right? There's so much housing that's needed in all different formations, and so I, I just really appreciate the title. So we keep growing and learning about the range of housing needed, and I just, I know we're going to come out successfully with this because we have such great leadership, and to all our staff. And I know, I wanted to say to the tiny home village, right, we, it, Commissioner O'Malley, that was also hers, we're full of accolades for her today, that was also her idea, it was the first in this, in the, in this state. And I, and, and it took, also, you know, we didn't know exactly how to run it, so it took some building. And now, under the leadership of Dr. Lindstrom, we have the program that matches the facility so that folks can be successful there. So I'm just really, I feel like we have all the right pieces in place, and I just want to thank everybody so much for the hard work and, and smarts and expertise.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'm, I'll be very brief. I just think excellent job to our county management team for taking, taking the lead on this, right? Taking that direction from the commission of setting this as a priority, and, and really hearing us, hearing the community that we represent, because ultimately, it's not us, it's our community, right, that's telling us about this challenge and, and expecting us to, to step up and do our part. And so I think we're well on our way, and I think it's important just to, to note that this is a menu.
That's right.
This is not a, a meal, so to speak, right? This is, this is not what we're having.
And, and as a matter of fact, if you don't mind, I, I really appreciate you raising that. We really are giving our best thinking to the governor's office. Ultimately, they're going to be making the choices and partnering with us through, we hope, intergovernmental agreements, and, and that's really important to note. I think that's exactly right. We're making our case, and they will be making choices. I also just wanted to say to Marcos and Carolyn and their team in economic development, they've been full-on doing economic development, running that new steering committee, and this at the same time as we're trying to bring staff on with one consultant. So, well, two, but, but like, really a tiny team. And then Ben, and I, I do want folks who are here, if you're on the Tiger team, if you could raise your hand, if you're on the Tiger team for housing. And, and let me just say what that is. That is a cross-organizational team that meets every other Friday under Marcos and Carolyn's leadership, with planning and all of our partners, Public Works, everybody, to, in order to make sure that we can move as quickly as possible. You would be blown away by the innovations of your staff, and you'll see that in the coming months, but I, I've just been really, really, really proud of the team. They, they are remarkable. So with that, I, I would, I appreciate that we're going to hear this again, and happy to meet anybody that you would like us to. We're, we're ready to have those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll close the floor, and Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboya.
Yes.
Chair Levas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes on a five-zero vote. Congratulations. Next up, we have budget item, fiscal year 2025, fourth quarter budget reconciliation with Accounting and Budget Director Jackie Sanchez to present.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Jackie Sanchez, Director of Accounting and Budget. This is the first, excuse me, this is the fiscal year 2025, fourth quarter budget adjustments agenda. These agenda items are presented each quarter. If there are any necessary budget adjustments, the county is required to submit quarterly detailed budget adjustments to the State Department of Finance, DFA, upon the Board of County Commissioners' approval. The FY25 budget was approved by the Board of County Commissioners April 9, 2024. It was approved by the State of New Mexico, DFA, on August 26, 2024, per State Statute The agenda consists of two motions to introduce a financial resolution in the amount of $800,000 to reduce the Metropolitan Detention Center Healthcare Authority Fund, and to authorize the county manager to, or designate pursuant to the administrative resolution 2023-77 to seek reimbursement of the general fund for any project or initiative funded by the general fund that subsequently receives funding in whole or in part from the alternative funding source, such as another agency, bond proceeds, or grants. If the amount exceeds county manager authority, the item will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners for approval. In reference to motion one, at the September 10, 2024 meeting, there were two financial resolutions approved to budget funding for the McLendon Stipulated Order. This was to address mental health care at MDC, creating a corrective action plan, CAP, and to provide medical services at MDC. FR 2024-99, budgeted funds in the healthcare authority fund, but the services required by the stipulated order are not services that the University of New Mexico Hospital will be providing. Therefore, the budgeted funding is not needed in the healthcare authority fund. To provide a background synopsis, this order is related to stipulated settlement agreement filed on July 3, 2024, creating a mental health cap. MDC, to improve mental health care being provided to subclass members. The stipulated order cap mandates services that include payment to counsel for plaintiff intervenors up to $60,000 through April 2025 to cover such costs. Supporting documentation includes the financial resolution and financial analysis form. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Commissioners?
I move approval.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboya.
Yes.
Chair Levas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes on a five-zero vote. And you're up again, Ms. Sanchez, for the FY26 budget adjustments.
Yes, thank you. This is the fiscal year 2026 budget adjustments. The agenda consists of one motion, and this is to approve the introduction, requesting the approval to carry over funds of $68,599,837 for the fiscal year 2026. Funds carrying over are initiatives and projects that started in fiscal year 2025, which are internal orders or projects. The fiscal year 2025 commitments of $68.6 million in funded programs or projects are being requested to be carried over to fiscal year 2026, as soon as July 1, 2025. The uncovered requests of $68.6 million are detailed in attachment number one. The carryover items are one-time internal orders and projects previously authorized by the commission. Any savings on the purchase orders will be tracked throughout the year, reverting to the general fund, and will be used to fund unexpected requests throughout the year. The breakdown by division has been provided. At the end of each fiscal year, departments request funds to be carried over so that they can continue with initiatives and projects started in fiscal year 2025. This allows departments to continue operating on July 1, 2025, without having to wait for final adjustments in September 2025. Numbers are being worked on and could change, as well as departments as departments can issue purchase orders and use P cards for projects. Note that no funding is being provided with the approval. Supporting documentations include a financial resolution and financial analysis form, as well as the attachment which provides the detailed information. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Madam Vice Chair?
I move approval.
Second, do we have any discussion? Yes, Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Jackie Sanchez, for this. I always appreciate your thoroughness. On this chart, on the attachments, the carryover attachments, the amount on the last is that, that's the carryover amount that, like, I guess hasn't been spent?
To the far left, let me look at the attachment.
Yes. Okay. And so, and I'm assuming, I just want to make sure I understand and I'm learning. Like, for example, so if, if it's a big amount, I'm assuming it's because there's still stuff we're trying to get for it, or it wasn't completely done. Like, if, why would we have, in some of these, we have, like, you know, $285,000, or, it was at North Valley, let's see, I just had one in my head. Well, or like, built-for-zero homeless initiatives, has $69,000 in it. Is that just because we didn't maybe get invoice? I mean, I guess just how, how or why don't some of these things get spent?
Yes. Madam Vice Chair, these, these are projects that are still open. And so, you know, there's still funding available to carry over, you know, to continue with a project for the next fiscal year.
Okay. And this is the one, this ends in this fiscal, th- this is for the budget carrying over into this fiscal?
Into FY26, correct.
Okay, thank you. And that's all. I just was trying to make sure I understood this correctly. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions, Chair?
All right. You helped me find some questions. So, along those lines, I can see where a lot of these makes sense, that you're going to carry over roof replacements and, you know, construction projects, things like that, that don't have a nice June 30 stock date. But, for example, one that's in here is, where did it go now? But it was branding costs. It said brand launch, $200,000. Brand launch outreach, $285,000. So I'm guessing that's sev- from several years ago now, when we, that was before my time even, when we changed to the, the new Burnco logo. So I, I guess I would, just kind of wondering, at what point do we look at these things and say, maybe that needs to be rolled over into just general fund balance, or maybe it needs to be reprogrammed by the commission?
Mr. Chair, if, if they're not, you want to go and come?
Do you still break it?
Yeah. Chair Levesque, usually these are open items, that there's outstanding invoices, so they're current. We do evaluate them throughout the year. We will close the PO if the service is finished. Or, and if not, that, when we close the PO, that money does roll into fund balance. But these are open items, mostly that the, either the project is in progress, or we haven't received the final invoice as of June 30th. So in order to, we move the funding over, so this is basically like moving the funding over into FY26, so when those invoices come in, they can be paid from this existing money rather than using FY26 budgeted dollars. So this just carries these dollars over into FY26 to meet the expenditures. So we have encumbered carryovers and we have unencumbered carryovers. The encumbered are the ones that have POs attached to them, but the, all the invoices haven't come in. The unencumbered are projects that go longer and within those particular projects, maybe items haven't been bid out or occurred yet.
Right, right. No, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I'm still kind of not understanding when we, when we cut bait, because I, another one that I found in here was moving expenses for when we moved into this building, again, before my time. So, to me, it's getting like, you know, those, those contractors, at some point, if we're still waiting on invoices, they might be out of business or something, like, I think.
I don't think so. The move, like, the moving expenses, there were those initial ones, but we still have departments moving in and out of the building, so they might be existing ones. We'd have to go into the detail to see. But there are POs or projects already existing for these.
I will say, let me just follow up.
Because we just, we just moved behavioral health services from the care campus, those individuals, over into this building. So there was moving expenses associated with that. We moved some people from 2,400 here and vice versa. So even though it's titled moving, it's into this building, it's not necessarily, it's not related to when we initially did the move.
And I would just add, and I think that's, that's so helpful. I appreciate your brain, Shirley. You always, you always know more than all of us. I, I will say, make one point, which is that one of the challenges that, that we're going to have to address more as it relates to how we're looking at our procurement systems overall, is doing a better job of explaining the description in these, because I would have had the same problem. But also being more clear about when we, when we anticipate something to close, or whether or not it's a fund that will stay in, in motion, because we would always need to do some of that because of the building. So I, I know that we are all thinking very critically about what kind of software we can use that will help us refine these. And ironically, I, I will also say that I think the, you know, the leadership that Annie and her team under Lisa are providing to, to look at the software necessary to be much more clear than we are today, is something that we're taking a look at for exactly the reason that you just stated.
And if I can add also, we do have a year-end closing process that is put together by procurement and accounting, and it has set deadlines for processing, when your deadline is to enter your POs, when your deadline is to close out this, enter your invoices. And we follow all of that to ensure that we can close the books accurately. So.
Yeah, that's exactly right. But a lot of that is manual, and we'd like to change that. It's just, it's, the staff is spending a lot of time on this in a way that they could be using their time much more creatively, I think, if we, if we gave them better tools. And we're working on that.
I understand. Thank you for answering my questions. Any other comments or discussion? All right. We'll close the floor. Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Levesque.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes on a five zero vote. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have our capital improvement program, the 2027 to 2031 ICIP resolution,
Good evening, Chair Levesque, Madam Vice Chair Barboah, Commissioners and colleagues. My name is Kathy Court, Chief of Government Affairs. Joining me today to help present and answer your questions is DCM Elias Archileta. He and I have been joined at the hip, it feels like, for the last couple months, working on this for you. This discussion item has two purposes. Burnley County is preparing for the 2026 legislative session by creating the annual 2027 to 2031 infrastructure capital improvement plan. The New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration requires a resolution to be accompanied by our list of 2026 capital projects, and that is due to DFA on July 11th of 2025. Secondly, we just wanted to raise the, the process that we're undergoing right now. We're recognizing that this capital improvement process needs to be enhanced, and we will be setting up meetings with each of you to gauge your feedback about our current capital process. Just keep in mind that our next update to the county's six-year capital improvement plan will occur in 2026, and our intent is to have our CIP enhancements in place by that 2026 update. Some of the things that we considered when we came up with our current list of projects for your consideration. Number one, our contract lobbyists gave us some feedback from this 2027, 2025 session. And basically, they said to consider scaling back the number of requests with priorities for each district and a menu of smaller requests. It's just very, it's, it's challenging for them to try and get money for every single project on our list. So that was the suggestion that they made. Number two, another consideration that we took into account as we looked at our current capital projects, was the fact that Governor Michelle Lujan Grissom did veto six of our 20 reauthorization requests for lack of any spending. So if federal cuts are severe enough, the legislature is looking at the unspent capital grants that could be used to fill gaps. And just as a little background, that unspent capital balance at the state level is $5.1 billion today. And she did veto six of our 20 reauthorization requests, but she vetoed a total of 97 in the 2025 session. And her message on all those vetoes were the fact that either the capital grant hadn't been spent at all, or only 1% or less of the grant had been spent. So what the Public Works and CIP teams did is we did not only update all the projects on our current six-year plan, but we're also engaging in conversations to update the whole process with stakeholders, including yourselves. And we will be working on that in the upcoming months. And on this slide, just, just for your information, some background, I gave you the definition of capital outlay and what does not qualify as capital outlay. These are all things that we consider as we look at our projects. So in the updates that our county departments did on the current list of capital projects, we did recommend projects that should be included in the county's 2026 capital outlay request package. We have met with each of you in the last week. We've provided you an overview of your district projects and, along with our multi-district projects and the projects that involve public safety. Of course, we still have time. If you have further questions about the projects that you're looking at, we are more than happy to schedule meetings with you and department personnel that have the expertise to answer your questions. What we are asking is that you review the projects in your own districts and the multi-district and public safety projects. Please identify your district priorities and recommend multi-district and public safety projects, priorities. And if you, if we're kindly requesting that you provide those priority recommendations to County Manager Travis and to myself by Friday, June 13th, because this item is coming back to you on June 24th for final approval, and we'll, we'll pretty much compile all the projects that you provide to us. And just a little more information for you that DCM Archileta would like to provide.
So if you remember back to our budget hearings and we were talking about our goals and what we were looking for, one of the big primary ones that I had for, for my division, because we were responsible for constructing pretty much anything that we have here in the county, whether it's a building, a road, or, I mean, even buying our fleet, was to update the CIP, to get us on a good, long-range, well-planned, asset-driven plan. So with that comes the, the, an updating the capital, our CIP ordinance. And this is a goal that has been also expressed by our chair. And in sitting down, we've looked at this and we are all kind of on the same page, you know, looking at the same goal line in there. And the reason we need this is our current ordinance was actually created back in 2013 and hasn't been updated since its, since its introduction. So in doing so, as, as Kathy noted going through here, there's been changes in state processes that coincide with the CIP, ICIP that's in there, that we no longer coincide with. And, and a lot of those dates that are included in that ordinance, our current processes don't line up with them. So we want, so we knew those had to be done. But as we're opening it up and in collaboration with Chair Levesque, we've started identifying areas where we have issues, where we recognize there's flaws, and where things can just be either tightened, improved, or completely recreated. So looking here to the next few months, we're going to be reaching out to you guys here on the board, as well as our own internal staff to, and, and also, we're reaching out to some of our, our state legislative delegations to see if they're, have some ideas too. But the idea is to come back with a collaborative and comprehensive revision to our ordinance and to our process.
So obviously, our first order of business, though, is getting our infrastructure capital improvement plan approved and submitted to the state of New Mexico by July 11th of 2025. And what the state does, it, it does collect all of the ICIPs from all the municipalities, counties, public school districts, tribal governments in the state of New Mexico. And from those ICIPs, they create an initial capital outlay bill that's posted in October. This is a 30-day session, so we anticipate that lawmakers will only have about two weeks to make their selections on what they want to fund out of that full listing. And that all becomes the final capital outlay bill. And with that, I stand for any questions. Oh, let me just mention, our next steps are June 24th, 2025. We will be asking you to approve a resolution that identifies and prioritizes the county's 2026 capital projects. July 11th, we hope to submit our ICIP to the state of New Mexico's Department of Finance and Administration. And as DCM Archileta has mentioned, we'll be, we'll, we'll be bringing to you some recommendations on how to improve and update our capital improvement process. So with that now, I will stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you both. I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Second?
And it was second from Vice Chair Barboah. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the outreach on the, the projects and the big, nice, easy-to-read lists. Those were, I'm serious, those were really helpful, to, to see those in large print. So, you know, I think this is the type of thing where we just don't really have any choice, right? We have to move forward with this in order to qualify for the next round of funding that's, that's coming up. But I am, I'm much more interested in, you know, what DCM Archileta was talking about. The, we've, we've had too many fights over this, in my opinion, on my short time on this commission. And I don't think that's actually because of anything other than just a process that's no one's fault in here, really, that, that doesn't allow great vetting of these projects. And just like we had the discussion earlier about the parking lot and the atrium, where did that project come from? Who said it was important? What quality checks were on it? All those kinds of things. So I'm very much interested in, in that. This is, of course, is important, the nuts and bolts of government, it's just, you know, moving this forward. But appreciate the outreach. And I do have a couple more questions that I'll follow up with afterwards on a couple of those projects. But for me, I'm personally very much ready to move forward and, and send you those. And I guess my, my challenge to my colleagues up here is I really think that we should all aim for five projects. Five in each district, five countywide, and five public safety. So that would be a total of, is it 35? That's probably still too many. And so we may even want to think about calling it further. But I think that, to me, that's a reasonable goal, a realistic goal, because, you know, as we see in the next item that we're going to approve here, we've got a lot of projects where we're not getting anywhere close to the full amount of funding that we need. And so I've said this over and over, but the fewer projects we request, the more money each individual project gets, which means we can move forward with the project or with the phase of the project versus having to sit on the money and not spend it and then get ourselves into trouble where we may get vetoed because of needing to reauthorize or something like that. So just want to challenge everybody to, to try and keep your list as short as possible. So just want to challenge everybody to try and keep your list as short as possible, because I think that'll help us in the long run with our strategic goal of trying to turn things around very quickly and deliver results to the community. So I'll put it up for any other discussion. Commissioner Frankbacher?
Yes. So I have quite a few thoughts and questions about this, not all of which I'm expressing at the moment. But I will say that I did not have any role in developing the list for District Two. I first was briefed on that yesterday at noon. By, I think we finished meeting at 1:00. By 1:15, I started shooting off emails about my concerns regarding the list and my lack of involvement in it, and also the lack of priority, prioritization of those projects. I've talked to many people over the last six months, and actually before I got elected, about a variety of projects that I think are important in my district. But I've never seen a complete list like this in this particular format for this particular reason. So I, you know, I understand the process. I understand there's a lot of things going on. But, you know, the way I see the world, the county commissioners are the eyes and ears of the community. We're the ones that get the calls. We're the ones that hear people that have concerns. And it's our job and duty, and quite frankly, I intend to do my job and duty, to express our concerns of our constituents to this commission. I will say that in regards to the chair's comment, I certainly get and understand his comment. But the dire need in the South Valleys in particular is and has been, for the last 40 years, small neighborhood roads. And I was told when I started running that roads are gonna, you're gonna live and die by roads. And I sort of knew that, but I sort of didn't know that. And now I know that. And it's not so much that I'm worried about the political ramifications of that, to be honest with you. But the fact is, there are people living throughout the South Valley with roads that have not been touched, according to them, I wasn't there to see, but according to them for 30, 40 years. So that is unacceptable, in my opinion. It's absolutely unacceptable. I think when I hear about parking lots being paved and money being gathered for here and there for these projects, and these roads have not been addressed, it just raises my ear, as you can tell. I'm not blaming anybody because there's water on the bridge, it's history. But going forward, I just feel strongly for my district and part of, on behalf of my constituents, that simply we have to do a better job. And perhaps the approach for us in District Two was to be pull the small roads into one project and say, we're looking for $5 million or $10 million for small roads. Because some of these projects are less than a million dollars. But I think, you know, we talked about peanut butter and jelly quite a bit over the last month. And again, I tried to be measured in my comments. But I was somewhat shocked that we had a building in the South Valley that had been using for services to children, important services to children, that had been failed, that we failed to maintain, period. It's just been failed to be maintained. It is absolutely unacceptable. When I walked into that building, I saw caution tape crossing off certain parts of the building, I was just absolutely in shock. And that's when I became such a strong advocate for that particular project. It, I think it's just simply time for us to look at the priorities of each district. And I'm here to tell you that I know what the priorities are for my district. Not only the fact that I listen to my constituents, but I have been living in that community for a long, long time, probably not longer than anybody here in this room has been alive. And so I know what the concerns are, and I just feel strongly, and I'm really glad that we have this one-two-step process we do for, we have now for approving bills, because that gives me some time to get, I know we have meetings set up and briefing set up, and I appreciate the responsibility of Ms. Court and Mr. Archuleta in answering those questions. But, you know, guys, this is just important stuff to people. This is important stuff to have the roads paved. And it's not always the large arterial, the large project. I mean, I appreciate the work done on Slade Boulevard, on Rio Bravo, on Bridge Street, all of that, I get that. But to not have these small roads attended to for year after year after year into the decades is, in my view, just completely unacceptable. I might add also that in this District Two, from the southwest Mesa and the South Valley, we have a very, very strong and effective delegation of legislators. And we go to them. We go to them all the time to ask for their money, ask for support. I've been talking to all of those state senators and representatives, some have been there a few years, some have been there many years. And we go to them, we go to the well. But if we're not serving them and their constituents, we're not doing our job. So again, I apologize for being a little emotional here, but to just find out about this list and the priorities that are not in any way, you know, in coordination with what I think the priorities are for my district was very, very, very disappointing. And I know I've sent out at least half a dozen emails in the last 24 hours about that. I don't blame anybody staying up at the podium speaking. You guys are doing your job, I get that. But I just think it's really time that we take a hard look at what are the real needs of the people living in that community. You know, I understand everybody up here on the dais have the different priorities and their constituents have different concerns, I get that. But my job is to relay the concerns of my constituents, and that's what I intend to do. So thank you for your work. I look forward to meeting with you in the weeks ahead and to discussing this in two weeks as well.
May I, through the chair, so?
Yes, Karen Manager.
Yeah, thank you. So first of all, message received. And I think what you're expressing is really rooted in the concern that I know Chair Olivas has raised and that the staff has, which is that we have all these planning documents that are supposed to feed into our capital process, and they're not connected. So we have a PROS plan, we have a, you know, we have our comp plan, we have a lot of plans, and they don't, they don't feed into a process where you're not only having an opportunity to look at priority areas for your district, but these bigger priorities. And so we're kind of at the beginning of doing that. Because frankly, the way it was working is everybody just threw stuff on a list, and nonprofits would call us, or you all would call us, or a legislator would call us, and say, put it on the list, and Kathy would run and try to get it some magic number that would then allow it to get funding. So we hear you. And the other thing is, we really believe that the priorities need to be set by you and frankly, have a mechanism for reaffirming it. Because one of the challenges, and I think Chair Olivas used this as an example, whether it was the atrium or other projects, where perhaps, because we're not moving as quickly as we need to, we have projects that are on lists forever. I mean, really, for a really, really long time. And we don't even know who prioritize the project. So what, your frustration, the consternation you feel, we feel it too, and we want to remedy that. I also just want to affirm with all of you that we recognize that this is, this is a first reading. We're really looking forward to getting more information from folks on Friday. Really appreciate the point that you raise about timing. Last year, what month did we put our list forward?
It was very similar timing. We actually have a resolution from last year. We actually did three things in June of last year. It was our six-year plan that we approved. We approved our infrastructure capital improvement plan for the legislative session. And we approved our geo-bond package. That's, and the geo-bond package and the ICIP are all based on the six-year plan. So we did three things last year, I think, all in one meeting.
And, yeah, and so we don't think that's enough transparency, and we don't think it's enough time. And so we recognize this is an issue we have to remedy. I also just want to point out two other things that I think are important. One is, as we were meeting with you, we were explaining that one of the reasons you have such a, that we're asking you to give feedback on public safety separately, is that we did a convening, probably for the first time ever, of all of our public safety partners and got them in one room. And they all expressed their immediate needs and their long-term needs. Their immediate needs were close to $300 million. Their long-term needs were about 1 point, I would say about $1.4 billion. And the problem is, is that the tool we're using right now, the, every other year, we have a $40 million bond, there is literally no way that we're going to meet these broad needs. And so one of the reasons we want to bring this information to you in packages is because I think it will help you, as we look at our legislative strategies and even our financing strategies, give us feedback about what our target should be and what we're going to prioritize as a community. So, so message received. We're looking forward to continuing to work with all of you. I'm particularly excited about us coming back with a feedback and getting your feedback on how the project, I mean, how we should be structuring our capital investments and what kinds of strategies we should be using, because we agree with all of your concerns.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Barbara Baca, and then we'll go to the vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I know that this is an iterative process, and, you know, we were bringing these projects forward, but I have some same frustrations that my colleague, Council Baca, Commissioner Baca, sorry, Frank, has. Because, for example, in my case, and I've already expressed this to you all in my briefing, there are no projects on the west side of the river, except for Attrisco Vista. And that's a big project, I know, and we put a lot of energy into it. And that's a good way to seek capital funding. And our legislators have pooled their funding to do that, because it's, and federal, you know, so that's important. But nothing else. So for me to hear, I have to give you priorities by Friday, and it's limited to five, I'm going, eh! That's not going to be very easy to do. Also, I've scheduled meetings with my legislator, but they're not available till the 20th. So it'll be before our meeting on the 24th. So I intend to bring some of those projects forward for the big six-year capital ICIP. I can't do that by Friday. So I hope that you all will work with us on this. I know that that magic number is critical, that the county manager talked about, and everything that needs to be on the ICIP. But I'm really encouraged that we're talking about improving the whole process, for sure. And I'm hearing everybody say, that's a good thing, you know? I would even say we should do a decade plan. That's what I'm used to, rather than a six-month, a six-year plan. You know, and then you have the process, and annually, this commission takes a look at it and gives you some suggestions on what comes forward to the top of that larger decade plan. And that's one way of doing it. That's what I was used to when I was at the city as a director. And you have criteria. That's what is called a criteria resolution that the commission would pass and say, this year, housing, by God, is the most important thing. That's what we did without the process, you know? Or roads, you know, or other kinds of criteria that we decide is going to happen with this new process. So I'm really encouraged by that. Given that, what is your comment, County Manager? We're building the plane as we fly it. I hope that you'll have some wiggle room that this ICIP listing can maybe be a little broader, and then we can winnow it down when we do our priority resolution that goes to the legislature for the asks. You know, and that gives us the opportunity to winnow it down at that point. So we don't have to go with 100 projects to the legislature, but at least our legislators, who are, you know, wanting to give us money, see their project on the list. We don't want, that's a really important thing, you know?
And you're right. Here's the balance. I'll just say, one of the things that we did this year is, and Kathy worked really closely, you, as you know, we did better this year, especially with the Senate, in part because we had a different approach with them. We had one person targeting a capital outlay. We used a very high-level document. But one of the things that is our task and our challenge, I think, is the, is the opportunity to really invest in significant projects, like peanut butter and jelly, right? Like getting all the money you need and saying, we're going to prioritize this. Versus what is happening is all of our legislators, too, look at whatever they cover for us, and they want to find something that fits within their interests and a geographic framework. So I think part of, and we will, we're going to really rely on all of your thinking about this, because one of our challenges is figuring out how you balance all of those interests and do it in a way that really reflects the values of the county, right? And I think, and by that, I mean, you know, if we're saying it's housing, it's public safety, it's behavioral health, then how are, how does that lay out? And I think the point, Commissioner Baca, Frank Baca, that you raised about each district could genuinely have a very different set of priorities. And then on top of that, we have some communities that are of such high need that we also have to figure out, how do we, how do we fold in those high-need communities so they don't fall further behind? All that is to say, all stuff I know you're thinking about, that as we move forward in the fall with this new process, we're going to have to kick the tires on it, because it's going to have to have, it's going to have to meet a lot of different types of needs that our current process just doesn't. It really doesn't. And even including saying, to your, back to your point about the decade, even if we're using a six-plan framework, I mean, a six-year framework, it doesn't mean you don't do a 10-year plan. It means that you're, you know, because you're investing year over year in, for example, needing to rebuild at some point MDC, which we will. That's a, that's a, that's a lot of, right? So is that it's year two, two and three that we're going to do the planning? Three and four that we're going to have to go figure out financing? Maybe make some rule changes at a federal level so we can apply for money at a state level, at, you know, for a county facility at a federal level, which we can't do today? You know, there are all those, and those are legislative strategies, right? Because they're both resources, but some of it's rule changes, so we can be competitive in different pots of money. So we're prepared, and we're thinking very critically about that, and really excited to work with you on it. Thank you.
Before you jump in, Vice Chair, I just wanted to clarify on the, on the five items. I think I was conflating our capital outlay resolution, which we're not considering, but I think this is the prerequisite, right? So, you know, the five is sort of what are the projects that we're going to focus on in this next legislative session? Just like the housing item, I think the ICIP that we're working on right now, this six-year plan, is the menu, right? It's all of the potential projects. It's more broad. So I probably shouldn't have thrown in the number of five, but it was really to say, as we think about this year and what we pursue this year, that was my recommendation or challenge to us. I'm sorry to interject there, Madam Vice Chair.
No, thank you for the clarity, and thank you, Chair. And I just, I love the discussion we're having, and I just think it's, let's just keep having it, because some of it's so nuanced, right? We wouldn't have, many of us said, we didn't think we could get 100 million for housing, and we did, and we still got all these other things. So I think our legislature, and I love that our county manager tried a new approach, having multiple lobbyists, maybe we keep trying different iterations of that, because, you know, there's only so many Albuquerque legislators. And then there's all, they're, you know, we're not going to usually get out from outside of Albuquerque or Burnley County. And then they all want to give a piece, and they all have things that they really care about, just like I really care about behavioral health. They maybe don't care about that road or whatever that we deeply care about. So I just think it's nuanced, and I think, one thing I would say, too, is that even with the nonprofits that come in, I mean, I think they do a good job advocating for themselves, so take our lobbyists off of that, because they do a really good job, and they're usually pretty successful in getting what they need. And our lobbyists can focus on what the county-specific requests are. And like for mine, I'm all the way inside the city, so I can't ask for some of the same things. So I'm often asking for more behavioral health or public safety infrastructure, because there aren't, I can't necessarily ask for the roads. The city's been like, no, don't do it. So I just say, like, I think, yes, I'm glad, I agree with everything that's been said this evening, and really appreciate y'all bringing this forward and just for us to keep trying approaches. And I think we keep getting it right. And I do think I would just add on this list of next steps is to start meeting, or we should start meeting with our legislators to say when we're going to have a list for them, when we can ask them for the specifics to our districts, and when we can ask them to help support with, you know, countywide priorities, like, you know, behavioral health or like things like, I think of, you know, the previous commissioner for the South Valley was really into Mesa del Sol, and the next commissioner may or may not be, right? So like, how do we, but we can't just leave Mesa del Sol now without resources, because we got to finish it, get it done, and for it to still be a beautiful county place. So how do we balance that, right? When your community needs small roads, and we have this, like, big thing up on top of the hill that also needs to get the, you know, get finished? So I'm just glad we're having these conversations, I guess, to say.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Anyone else want in for a second? No? All right. We'll close the floor. And Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call vote, this is for introduction and final adoption later in June.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That passes on a five-year vote. We'll see that back here at the end of June. And Ms. Kathy Court, you're up next on the additional item for looking back at our 2025 legislative appro- legislative appropriations.
Yes, thank you, Chair Olivas. Before I introduce this next item, I did want to acknowledge Lori Romero, who works with me as a strategic program manager. Where is she? Right here, right in the front. And she really is the one who puts all these capital outlay grants together. She knows our accounting system so well, so without her, we wouldn't be doing this today, is it? So, thank you. So this is an introduction of a motion to approve a financial resolution that budgets $25,997,444 in legislative capital outlay appropriations awarded to Burnley County during the 2025 State of New Mexico legislative session. This motion will also be to authorize the county manager to execute all State of New Mexico agency grant agreements or amendments for the 2025 legislative capital outlay appropriations and reauthorizations that exceed the county manager's signature authority. There are three types of legislative appropriations that we're asking for your approval to budget. The first type comes from House Bill 450, which was our capital outlay bill, and in that bill, Burnley County received $19,454,000 in the capital projects that were presented to our legislature in the 2025 session, and were in last year's ICIP. Another $5,668,444 are capital outlay grants designated to nonprofit organizations. The second type of appropriation that you're asked to authorize is the appropriations that come out of House Bill 425, which was our capital outlay reauthorization bill. We had $3,355,637.98 in reauthorized capital grants that were approved in the bill. One of those is a reauthorization for a nonprofit grant that we have. And finally, out of House Bill 2, we have an $855,000 grant designated to a nonprofit organization that serves domestic violence victims. Departments have been notified of the 2025 legislative appropriations. It is the department's responsibility to spend down these funds by the term dates of each agreement, and they must follow all procurement measures to assure funds are being spent accurately and efficiently. The CIP Strategic Program Manager, our coordinator here, Lori, is responsible for routing agreements for county manager's signature, and she acts as the liaison between the State Department of Finance and Administration and our county departments. After your approval at the end of the month, June 24th, budget will appropriate the funds in the budget system, and then departments are able to use the funds as soon as the individual grant agreements are executed and departments submit a notice of obligation request to the state. And finally, the 2025 legislative funding is based on the county's adopted 2026 to 2030 ICIP plan, which was approved as AR 2024-80 by the BCC on June 25th of 2024. This is an analysis that was done by our county, our contract lobbyists, and I just did want to point out to you that we did receive more money this year from our lawmakers. I really do credit our contract lobbyists, Matt Munoz and Charlie Marcus, who really just focused on our capital outlay requests, and they did a really good job. And in fact, where you see their greatest impact was in the Senate. Last year, our senators gave us $6,675,000. This year, it was $12,606,000. So you can really see where Charlie and Matt really focused their efforts on all individual lawmakers, and they really had a positive impact. I spoke to you about the 97 reauthorization requests that were vetoed by the governor this year. Six of those were Burnley County's reauthorization requests. Basically, her reasoning, grants authorized in 2022 or earlier that had no expenditures to date, or the available balance was less than 5% of the original appropriation. I misspoke, I said 1%, but it was 5% of the original appropriation. And finally, I'll stand for any questions.
If I could, just to wrap up, I wanted to make one point, or two points, actually. One is, again, I wanted to thank the commission for your work in giving us really solid priorities to work with. What wasn't listed there was obviously the 110 million also, because what could have happened to us is people could have said, "Oh, you're getting that 110, you're getting nothing, and you'll like it." And that didn't happen, and I really wanted to acknowledge Kathy's really incredible work. I wanted to acknowledge that, you know, all of the folks that, you know, we had three lobbyists. We did make a change this year to add to the, two more to just focus on capital outlay. And I wanted to thank Ken also, because, you know, for me, this was all very new and getting, and really Chair Baca, former Chair Baca and Vice Chair Olivas spent a lot of time giving me feedback, and I just wanted to say how much I appreciated it. But I really wanted to say to Kathy and her team, they, and our communications team, we did something we hadn't done before. So we added two lobbyists. Our comms team, for 60 days, did nothing but stock the capital, really. And then Kathy really managed the lobbyists, because we had to make sure they were giving us feedback very specific on these, so that we were able to really track, where were we getting traction, where were we getting traction, and how did we adjust during that time period? So we learned a lot. We did a debrief, and I also just wanted to say to all of you, I think the Burnco Day, like, we just did a lot of kicking up the hay and really celebrating the good work of our legislative delegation as well. So we'll keep on it. We're gonna keep making improvements. I'll look forward to, in my follow-up meetings with all of you, learning a little bit about what you thought worked, what we could do better. I will tell you, I've gotten an earful from our legislative delegation. They have no problem telling me what they think about how we could do a better job, and they've actually been wonderful and very encouraging, but very insightful and very, to be candid with you, really excited, you know, overall, really excited. So, thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A motion from the Vice Chair, I'll second. Any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Baca.
Just have a quick question. Can you go back to that last slide? My question is, and maybe this isn't the place to answer that, but our 22, oh, six of our 20 projects were vetoed. Do we have a list of those somewhere? And do you have the reason why we only spent less than 5%? I mean, what was it? I just don't know the answer to that.
I do have that list for you, and I'm happy to share it tomorrow. I have a full Excel sheet, and we know which ones were not reauthorized. I will tell you that we are changing processes internally. I've put Lori on the case, basically. She's gonna be our point person for all of our quarterly updates to the State of New Mexico, we're required to do for every capital grant that we receive. One of the things, one of the flaws in our system, if County Manager Chavez doesn't mind me saying, is that we get all these grants, and sometimes some of them get lost in the shuffle, and somebody isn't paying attention to whether that grant is being spent down. And in the future, we wanna be able to be proactive. If we're not being able to spend down a grant for whatever the reason is, whether it's because maybe an agency is taking too long to approve our payment request, or payment reimbursement, or approve the notice of obligation that we are required to have before we proceed with a project, we have that side of it going on. We need to be made aware that county manager needs to know about that, so we can approach, you know, our lawmakers, "How can you help us with this agency, et cetera?" On the other side of it, we need to identify the projects that are not moving along, and why? Why are they not moving along? And back to your point, Cheryl Levas, and all of you have made it, we need to do a better job tracking our capital grants, because in this new era of legislative scrutiny, we wanna be able to keep our money and get more of it. And so we are changing internal processes to be more mindful of every single capital grant. Lori's job will be to be monitoring all those quarterly updates and identifying when something isn't moving or we're not getting enough information on the progress of a capital grant. So that's just, you know, just a short reply to all the things that we're trying to do to make this better internally.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, we'll close the floor, and Madam Clerk, if you give us a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes on a 5-0 vote. Thank you. All right. Item G, information technology. We're gonna hear about the new capital improvement plan and operational excellence office integrated system from our CIO, Robert Benavides.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. It's a perfect segue on the topic we just talked about. We're coming to you today, asking, or introducing our resolution and some motions to allow us to acquire a new system that's gonna help us manage our CIP budgets. Kathy mentioned it's a quarterly update they have to do, and that right now, that's very labor-intensive, takes a lot of people to pull that update together on a quarterly basis, and it's not automatically connected into our financial systems. So somebody has to put that information into the system, which obviously introduces opportunity for error and problems with that data. We're, the solution that we're bringing forward actually addresses two needs within the county. One is improvement of that capital improvement plan management system, and the other is our operational excellence office. The system that we're using there is also about nine years old, and it's not, it's not integrated into our financial systems again, so we wanna get that integration in there. So the objective of this project is to replace these two outdated systems. One's in-house, internally developed, and one's a vendor-off-the-shelf system, be integrated into our financial systems. It allows us to do public-facing dashboards that include not only updates on projects, but also real-time, within 24-hour, financial information in terms of how much has been spent for a particular lead, how much remains, that sort of thing. And most importantly, for a lot of us, it will replace the manual work of automated workflows, so we don't have to have people sitting at the keyboard to get the information into the system. So this is kind of a recap of our current state. I mentioned we're using an in-house app that's probably 15 years old, I think, for CIP, and we've been using OpenGov for our dashboards on the website for about nine years, so we'll bring both of those into the modern era, if you will. So we'll be able to have live, up-to-date dashboards with real-time information from our financial systems, and so ultimately, it really will increase our transparency, because we'll be able to turn around information much more quickly to our constituents in terms of how we're spending against the priorities that they set forth. The product we're looking at comes from a company called Invisio. They have a good pedigree dealing with government customers. They have about 200 government customers in New Mexico. They service the city of Albuquerque as well as the city of Las Cruces, and so we think it'll be a great solution. In terms of the proposal itself, we are coming forward with a financial resolution for the first, for the five years of subscription costs and the implementation costs themselves, which will be in the first year, just about $637,000 total over that five-year period. The year one will be about $300,000 for the implementation, as well as the first-year subscription costs. And on that, we will stand for any questions you may have for us tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Benavides. Questions? Can I get a motion?
Love the approval.
All right. And I'll second the motion from Commissioner Barbara Baca, and a second from the chair. Any further discussion? Vice Chair's coming back here, so she can get in the vote. We'll close the floor, and Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Cheryl Levas.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Passes on a 5-0 vote. All right. Last item of the evening, the solid waste residential user fees, and we have Director of Operations and Maintenance, Antonio Haddamio, to present.
Apologize, I didn't have time to download, so let me just get this up real quick. Are you guys ready to talk trash? All right.
That's why you had to wait to the end, right?
Yeah, right.
We're good at that.
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Madam County Manager, who probably is walking in right now, we're here to talk about the solid waste residential fee increase. This is our annual submission to you all to consider the rate increases for solid waste services. A little bit of a history, there is the services that are mandated, and they are mandatory collection, for countywide collections. I'll pause here for a second. I want to introduce a couple of people who I have. We do have representatives from Waste Management, as well as our Solid Waste Manager here to answer any questions that you may have regarding our services. So our current contract is with Waste Management. It began in the first, January 1st of 2022. We are in the third year of a four-year term. We do have the ability to extend that for another four years, depending on how we, you know, the, how the commission wants to proceed. Also, and what we're asking for here is our Consumer Price Index adjustments, a little bit of history there. It is part of the, the contract with Waste Management to allow for these CPI increases, again, the Consumer Price Index adjustments. They will take into effect on July 1st of every contract year, and what are they based on? Well, they're based on is what's called the Water, Sewer, and Trash CPI, which is determined nationally, and that, and that usually comes out in, per the contract, we use the, that rate in March, and then we get that number from Waste Management, and then we consider any operational needs that we have based off of increases that we've seen on our end. So as it stands right now, we're looking at the one that, the CPI increase that was introduced was a 4.8. We are requesting a 5.5 increase based on absorption of some of the fund, some of the CPI increases in previous years. So we have basically diluted our, the fund that we have to operate, so we wanna be able to continue to serve our customers on a regular basis. So that's why we're coming into you with a 5.5 increase. So what does that do to the regular constituency? I've outlined here what that variation means, and this is, again, on a monthly basis. What Waste Management does is they issue invoices every quarter. So you multiply that by three for every, so that that's what they'll experience every quarter. So again, we do have different thresholds associated with low income and very low income. There is a process there that is done to make sure that those individuals who do qualify have less of an impact of those who don't qualify. So again, those ones in red that you see there are the, basically, the variances that are be associated with that 5.5 increase. Again, we still have the rollout services that are provided by Waste Management, a bulky item pickup, which is free, we continue that, and all of those other things that are there. We do want to also emphasize that they do have, I know there has been some feedback on customer service responses from Waste Management, and we also, we would like to advertise that we do have a dedicated number associated with Burnley County in reference to solid Waste Management. We do have the, so that's the 5052241639, and then we also have the Waste Management General Number, which is right there, too. So any of your constituents who do have specific concerns regarding solid waste residential pickup, they can call those numbers. And again, offices, our offices are also available to troubleshoot. We do work hand-in-hand with Waste Management to address any concerns that you may have. So with that, I'll stand with any questions.
Thank you, Director. Do we have a motion?
I have a question.
Okay. Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Can you flip back to the last one? I'm not sure I heard you right. So the weekly residential roadside collection is going up by 1.8 cents per quarter? So I'm a ratepayer, it's gonna be $4 more?
Yeah, so that, that $1, Mr. Chair, Madam County, Commissioner Baca, so that is a $1.18 increase per month. You multiply that by the four, yeah, for the quarter.
That's 12, okay.
Yes.
For the quarter.
The quarter. The quarter.
So what am I paying more annually? Are you saying 12 dollars?
Twelve, yeah, 12 dollars.
Per quarter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, no.
No, per year. $12 per year.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, the numbers don't, but you do. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Frank Baca, did you wanna?
Uh, I, I just wanna thank Antonio for specifically addressing issue of customer service and with all due respect to the gentleman here from Waste Management, I would describe it as lack thereof. Uh, I have personally had the, uh, experience of trying to get through to your system and then I started getting calls from people about that, and I will just say, it is absolutely unpenetrable. Uh, at one point in time, when I needed something for a tenant, I actually drove down to the facility that then existed off of Second Street, I don't know if it's still there, and that office was unstaffed. There was a yardman there that was very helpful, uh, but I've had people who are very tech-savvy, more so than I, that have tried all step, different ways to get through and were absolutely unable to do so. Uh, I thank you, Antonio, for addressing that. I know we directed one of our calls, one of the constituent calls to you and appreciate you sharing this information because when we're doing, paying money and increasing this, you know, our fees, we should expect decent customer service. So thank you for addressing that issue. And I will be calling in next couple of days, those numbers.
Thank you.
All right. Does, uh, someone wanna make a motion?
It does not pass. I'll move. Even though y'all don't service my district, but.
Second. All right. So we have a motion from the Vice Chair, a second from the Chair. Um, I'm just gonna say quickly, I'm not gonna support this. Um, really, it's a protest vote because I don't agree with this contract and the provision that I rail on every year when we do our debt forgiveness. We should not be subsidizing a private industry that has the ability to reflect the cost of service. Cost of service includes delinquent accounts. We shouldn't be subsidizing that. The rates should reflect that. So with that, I'm, I'm not gonna support this for that reason, but I realize that's not really what this is, so. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
No.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
I'm gonna have to abstain because I don't, um, totally understand. I have not gotten any, uh, uh, constituent complaints, but I'm not understanding totally the, um, the conversation here. So this is just to introduce. I'm gonna have to abstain.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
No. Uh, so I'm gonna look to our staff here for a little guidance here. That was a two to two vote because we had one abstention.
So, Mr. Chair, I may have to, um, refer to legal here on the abstaining of the vote, um, and refer to our rules on parameters surrounding that before you determine the final vote.
Respectfully, there's, uh, no provision to abstain from a vote unless it's like a conflict of interest. So it's either yes, no, or abstaining for conflict.
Take a walk.
I think I was saying it right, but that comes from Robert's rules. It's either yes, no, or abstaining for another.
And so to be clear, this is an introduction so that we will, it'll come back. And so I'll, I will change my vote to yes for the introduction. I need to get more information on it because I have some concerns, so. I'll vote yes to keep it going forward.
All right. That passes on a 3-2 vote, uh, for introduction. Thank you.